I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Harper-Peterson?
Present.
Commissioner Silbermann?
Present.
Commissioner Corral?
Present.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Present.
Chair Marsters?
Present.
The first item on the agenda is the appointment of officers. Pursuant to San Carlos Municipal Code, Section 2.24.100, the Planning Commission shall, during the month of May of each year, appoint a chair who shall serve at the pleasure of the commission for a period of one year or until their successors have been appointed. The Planning Commission will also appoint a vice chair and a member of the commission to serve as chair of the Residential Design Review Committee for a period of one year. So I will open up the nominations now for the position of Chair of the Planning Commission.
I would nominate Angela Harper-Peterson.
Let me second that.
Any other nominations?
I nominate Commissioner Silbermann.
I will second that.
You know what, I'm honored, but I also am a humongous believer in tradition, and my understanding, if I'm not mistaken, is that the tradition is that the vice chair tends to ascend to the chairmanship or chairwomanship, excuse me, as the case may be, from year to year. Is that, for those who have more knowledge than I, is that right?
That has been typical, but anything is possible.
I think I would like to withdraw, although I am extremely, extremely honored at the nomination. I think I would withdraw myself from consideration.
Okay, so we have one nomination for Chair of the Planning Commission. Would somebody like to close nominations?
Call the question.
Okay. All those in favor of Angela Harper-Peterson becoming the Chair of the Planning Commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Congratulations.
Does that mean you move over right now?
I think we've decided, I think we've decided that we're going to do that at the next meeting.
That's what it means.
You did slide the gavel.
Now I'd like to open up nominations for Vice Chair of the Planning Commission.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Silbermann.
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Okay, seeing none, let's move forward. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? None. And the last position is the Chair of the Residential Design Review. In recent history, the Chair of the Residential Design Review has also been the vice chair, but that's mainly been because we have liked to have that experience before becoming the Chair. It does not have to be the vice chair, and so at this point, I will entertain nominations for Chair of the Residential Design Review Committee.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
I know that Angela has enjoyed it a lot. Can I ask her whether she would be interested in doing it again?
I do really enjoy it, and I'd actually wouldn't mind keeping it with the small exception that there might be some administrative overlap, just timing-wise, with coming from the RDRC to the Planning Commission meetings. So I guess, Scott, I would ask you what you thought of that.
My first thought on this would be that it would be nice to include more members of the commission, and the learning experience that you go through with the Residential Design Review, in a sense, prepares you to become vice chair and chair of the commission. It's sort of a training ground. So I think that I would encourage it to be somebody other than the Chair.
Okay. So Jesse Michael, what do you think? Want to do RDRC? It's awesome.
It's talented, the two of us.
I'm happy to do it as well. I know that traditionally, the vice chair has done it. I'm happy to do it, but I have no particular desire, one way or another, to do it. So if either of you have interest, I'd be happy to...
I always have interests, and that's what I know. I do sell low states.
All right. Well, I think that I then would like to nominate Jesse Gutierrez.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Oh, thank you.
Any other nominations? Seeing none. All those in favor of Jesse Gutierrez as being Chair of the Residential Design Review Committee, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? None. Thank you, and congratulations to all three of you. The next item on the agenda is public comment, and we have one speaker, and that would be Andre. Would you like to come up and come to the microphone?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andre Carpio. I come from the city of Emoryville, and I have come many, many times since 2004 to claim my solar car that was stolen. It was given by the San Carlo police to someone who pretended to be the owner, and the car has disappeared since. I have filed grievances, of the grievances, and basically have been ignored. And as you read on the letter that I sent you, I have some damage claimed because I haven't been able to exploit the patent, the patents that were, that are tied up with the solar car. I have one U.S. patent and three European patents. And my right has been violated, not only by the police, but by the city of San Carlo, because they published, you put on the internet, a story that is not accurate. So I have been defamed. The message of the document on the internet suggests that I have been pretending fraudulently to get the solar car. But as you know, anyone who patented a system, it doesn't matter if it's electronic, like Apple or those people there, they own the patent. They own the product. And to pretend that I do not is a clear, not only ignorance of the patent law, but also an ignorance of the issue of product liability. As the owner and as the manufacturer of the car, I am the only responsible for product liability, no one else. And at this day, I still carry all the insurance, not only third-party, but for the product liability. If something happens with the car, lose a wheel, and kill children or someone else, they will come to the owner, the manufacturer, not the person who possesses the car. So, you know, I'm trying, of course, you have nothing to do, you're on the Planning Commission, but I just want to let you know what's happened because the previous chairman of the Planning Commission, she passed into the city council. She was elected, or whatever term, nominated, but she doesn't seem to care. And it's a grave injustice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to speak under public comment? Please state your name for the record. I've always wanted to say that.
Oh, you're assuming I'll give the right name. No, I'm just kidding. Mark Albert, 76 Bayview Drive, speaking for myself. I actually just wanted to take a minute and do two things. One is to thank the entire Planning Commission for dealing with a very complex year. You, as Andre just alluded to, your chairman moved up to, chairwoman, excuse me, moved up to the city council, and that created some openings on your commission, and I think there were another opening at the time. So those are always challenging times, particularly when you have complex issues to deal with, and you've had a few of those. So thank you all for that. And I also just wanted to particularly thank Chair Marsters for his efforts. It always looks a lot easier to run these meetings than it actually is, at least based on my experience. So thank you very much, Scott, for all the help that you've given to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
You're not going anywhere yet, are you?
I'm not.
Can we thank you later?
Yes. Approval of the minutes.
Just had one small correction. At the very end, under Reports and Correspondence, under D, I'm pretty sure I asked about the downtown parking study, not Chair Marsters, so...
I agree.
I'm sorry. Under Reports, Correspondence, and General Information, Item D.
Easier mistake to make, based on past history.
Scott and I look a lot alike, so we get that all the time.
That is not what I meant, but...
It is. It is.
Okay. Moving on. Oh, no. Let's...
Does anyone else have any, I don't have any changes.
Does anybody else have any changes?
No.
I would move approval.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing. The procedure for a public hearing: Staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant, in this case, it's the city, will make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed, and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should fill out a speaker's form, found by the door, and hand it to the recording secretary prior to addressing the commission. The speaker should come up to the microphone to speak, since the meeting is being recorded. This will assist staff in preparing the minutes. Item A: Consideration of zoning ordinance amendments to the San Carlos zoning map and San Carlos zoning ordinance, Title 18 of the San Carlos Municipal Code, to establish a new zoning district, landmark commercial, and to amend use regulations pertaining to the general commercial industrial zoning district. This item is continued from the May 6, 2013 Planning Commission meeting.
Good evening. I don't know, should I say interim Chair, Marsters, and Commissioners? Again, my name is Lisa Porras. I am the principal planner here at the city of San Carlos. And the item before you tonight is a continuation from the landmark sites' proposed zoning ordinance amendments that were presented at the previous Planning Commission hearing on May 6. Tonight, for the benefit of anyone listening to this or hearing this for the first time, I'd like to just quickly revisit a bit of the background about the landmark sites, and then restate the direction that we received, that staff received, from the Planning Commission at the previous hearing. And I'd also like to describe staff's continued outreach with the property owners and the discussions that we've had, and highlight some of the concerns from the letters that we received. And following that, I would like to briefly introduce the city's economic consultant, Jim Simon, with RSG, who will be presenting the commission with some elements regarding fiscal considerations and implications. So as we recall from the previous meeting, landmark sites are part of the city of San Carlos's vision, the city's policy, and the city's current economic development strategy, mainly because of their location. They've been identified as having an advantageous location, being next to the freeway, and also they're identified in the city's general plan as the primary gateway to the city. I should back up for a moment, because I'm not showing a map this time, but again, the landmark site that we are going to be, that's up for consideration tonight for rezoning, are those properties at the corner of Industrial and Holly, landmark site A, and landmark site B. Landmark C has been eliminated, but I'll get to that in a minute. The description tied to these landmark sites has always been one that envisioned destination-oriented type facilities that would be at least 25,000 square feet or greater. They would be highly visible because of their location. They would draw from a regional market base. The development, the architecture overall, and the site design would be of high quality with good materials, and the project could be at least 50 feet tall or more. And in particular, the sites were identified to be preserved for future hotel, office, and restaurant uses. And again, they are, they remain a part of the city's economic development strategy. The economic development plan was adopted in 2007, which identified the landmark sites, and then again was updated in 2010, which further restated the city's intent to ensure that these sites remain identified as landmark sites for such development. To repeat, we went over this the last time, but again, some of the key general plan policies, again, this is from our comprehensively updated general plan policy adopted by the council in 2009. The policies there state that the city should support and maintain land uses that contribute to the city's economy and support the fiscal well-being of the city. Policies in the general plan also state that the city should implement the economic development plan, of which contains policies for the landmark sites. Policies also encourage new development on parcels that front Highway 101 to expand the city's tax base. And in particular, there is policy that we should encourage development of the landmark sites for such uses. On May 6, the last time we met, in conclusion of the meeting, the Planning Commission had asked staff to look into the possibility of allowing some uses to be permitted by right. The commission also asked staff to decrease the cost of the conditional use permit and look at perhaps allowing minor use permits. So again, that would be a cost and timing consideration. And then also look into eliminating landmark site C, which is down at the southern end of the city, which had already been developed with the Circle Star office and hotel project. So as you'll note, and is stated in your staff report and listed in the exhibits to the resolution, staff did make some changes to allow some uses to be permitted by right. And so some examples of the types of business that we looked into allowing by right are business services, food preparation-oriented uses, maintenance and repair, offices, gyms less than 5,000 square feet, and general retail. In this instance, being permitted by right means you don't need any additional or any planning permit from the planning division. However, because these uses would be interim, they would need to operate in an existing building. So again, uses permitted by right would be allowed to move into the existing buildings that are on the ground today without any requirement or oversight from the city. Staff also looked in the use table, as I mentioned before, and we changed some of the conditional use permit requirements to allow minor use permits, which is in effect a cost difference to applicants. A minor use permit would cost an applicant just over $2,500, whereas conditional use permit subject before the Planning Commission approval would require over $5,000. So again, that would be to help streamline the process, because you could meet with the zoning administrator anytime versus the two times a month with the Planning Commission. And we agree that elimination of landmark site C seemed appropriate, given the development that had previously taken place. Regarding staff outreach with the property owners and the overall process in general, starting back from April 23, you recall that staff presented these changes to the Economic Development Advisory Commission. And the commission actually recommended that there should be a particular zone, that the landmark sites were significant enough that they should have their own zoning designation. Staff had presented some options where we would keep the GCI, but added a number of different qualifications in the form of footnotes for the sites. So based upon the Economic Development Advisory recommendation, we came up with an entirely new zoning district for these parcels. Meetings with property owners occurred May 6. That was right before we had our hearing, first hearing on this subject. And then again, on May 14, where we shared with the property owners the proposed changes that are before you tonight. And I will say that the property owners remain opposed to any zoning ordinance amendments that have been proposed. So I believe we should all have the six letters that we received around May 16, May 17. There should be six letters that you received for this particular item. Some of the things that we heard from property owners was that there really were no changes made since the May 6 Planning Commission hearings, and that all uses still remain subject to time and cost. Staff would disagree with this statement outright, that there haven't been any changes. The city was, the staff doesn't recommend that the city completely turn over 100% of the discretion to the property owners by permitting uses outright. With uses being permitted outright and without any condition that they occur in the existing building, a property owner could choose to expand a building, to enlarge it, to tear it down and rebuild, and that wouldn't be conducive to achieving the longstanding vision. So we wanted to at least remove some discretion and allow things by right, but require that they go inside the existing buildings. The other comment that we heard was a little bit of confusion over some uses being permitted versus being grandfathered in. And that had to do with instructional services, which is a use classification in our zoning ordinance, and the large and small-scale commercial-recreational use classification in our zoning ordinance. And instructional services are defined as a use that would, that's defined by single, or maybe there might be two instructors, that would instruct a single type of skill, whether that could be a voice instruction, a yoga instructor, a mixed martial arts instructor, that would have a facility focused on that one particular instruction-oriented use, versus commercial recreation use, which is more tied to what you would conceive as a gym or a fitness club. And certainly in fitness clubs, you could have yoga classes, or maybe there would be a mixed martial arts class, but they would be occurring within the larger construct of a gym, whereas instructional services are smaller, single-type-of-instruction-oriented use. And the reason that came up is because an instructional service uses are currently under the GCI zoning designation, allowed with a minor use permit. And the proposed change is to not allow those particular uses because they don't fit within the longstanding vision of the city for economic development of the site. So if a use is currently on the property right now, that there's a vocal teacher, or a yoga instructor, or martial arts instructor, that use could continue. Even if the city council adopted these changes a month from now, that particular use could continue. They would be grandfathered in. And even if that particular yoga instructor or voice teacher decided to close shop and move at a different location, the current property owner could obtain another yoga instructor to keep that former use in operation, provided that it occurs within six months. So we already have this provision of grandfathering uses in our zoning ordinance already. So I just wanted to make that clarification. We also heard that the amendments are fundamentally flawed, that they're ill-conceived, that they're hastily drafted. But what I would like to remind the commission is that these policies and regulations aren't new. They weren't hastily drafted. They existed in the 1991 specific plan, and what we're trying to do is recapture them and put them back into place to ensure that the economic objectives for the city can be met. We also heard that the vision is no longer valid. Well, as we'll see later in the presentation, the city was able to achieve some of the longstanding economic development objectives for two sites, particularly the Circle Star and the other hotel, I believe it's the Fairfield Suites on the north side, or, excuse me, on the east side of Highway 101. And then, in addition to some of the letters received, as part of one of the letters, the idea of a fitness gym, which came in the context of a conceptual proposal, was also submitted and is provided in one of the letters that the planning commissioners have, you should have on your dais. And this is just, for the benefit of the audience, this is just a depiction of what the city received. And it consists of a 45,000-square-foot building with 300 parking spaces on three of the parcels of this particular landmark site, which consists of five in total, but this development proposal is for three. And one of the things that we wanted to note in particular is that this particular proposal, as it's presented here, is significantly underutilized. It does not take advantage of the ability to construct more building mass on the property. We, just for comparative purposes, the landmark commercial zoning district, as well as the GCI, would allow an FAR floor area ratio of 2.0. And that basically means, for this development proposal presented here, that 281,000 square feet of potential property tax, retail tax, and transit-oriented tax is left on the table. So we'll come back to this probably in a minute, and I imagine our consultant will talk about that as well. So at this point, I would like to turn it over to Jim Simon with RSG, who will go through some of the fiscal considerations.
Good evening. My name is Jim Simon. I'm a principal with RSG, the city's economic development consultant. And, you know, just to recap, you know, we looked at this from a global perspective in terms of why is, you know, revenue generating uses, why is that important to the city, influencing land use policy. Obviously, the city is driven by, you know, what's in the best interest of the overall community and the overall health of the community. And in this case, it's been over 15 years since the last hotel was built and opened in the city. It's been quite some time. And San Carlos, as it's shown in this graph, is significantly behind adjacent nearby cities in the area. There's seven cities in the area. As you can see in the graph, the bottom shows the average amount of transient occupancy tax, which is the bed tax that cities get from hotel stays. That is averaged out on a per-household basis, so we can try to compare city size and make it relative to each other. If you look at this, it basically shows that the overall, San Carlos overall revenues is not among the highest in the region. And in fact, the transient occupancy taxes are extraordinarily low, at an average of $66 per household in the city, or just over $1 million a year right now. To put that into perspective, all right, to put that in perspective, the city of San Carlos would have to see the number of hotels quadruple just to reach the average of every other city in the area around it in terms of hotel activity. So the hotel market is present all around us, but not here within the city. Why is that important? Well, cities have limited ways to provide and fund services. Most of the city's services are funded through two sources: property taxes, which the city gets only 5.8% of all the taxes that are collected within its jurisdiction. That all goes to the city's general fund. That all goes to the city's general fund. A small portion going to pay down redevelopment, wind down obligations. And the balance, the other major source of funding is sales tax, which actually the city is slightly underperforming the other seven cities in the area as well, but not nearly to the extent that it is in the TOT. So TOT is important because cities, you know, collect a relatively large amount of revenue from one business, whereas a property taxpayer would pay, you know, about a little over 1% of their assessed value, and those taxes would be spread through a variety of different agencies. The TOT taxes are all collected and they stay locally. That's why cities are interested in that. And it's also a separate funding mechanism that can balance out other things that are going on in real estate. And just to put also into perspective here, I did a quick analysis to see, you know, what if we were just to be not the absolute bottom of the seven cities, but just to try to sort of grow a little bit of additional demand from these two sites. We assume maybe 450 rooms could be developed on both the two sites, A and B of landmark, in the landmark area, and that would still move the city just in, just one notch up, if you will. So 450 rooms additionally does not have a significant impact on the overall position of the city relative to where it sits amongst competing cities in the area. So this is an issue because how does the city continue to provide and fund services for residents that expect equality of life to be maintained and that type of thing. Some of the national news on hotels, we've summarized here, this came from PKF Consulting, who is an internationally known advisor to the hospitality industry. I've worked with them as they've been a subconsultant to our firm, and we've worked and collaborated on projects in California as recently as a month ago. And nationally, you know, there are a lot of good metrics out there. I think uncertainty is true in just about every sector of the economy right now. So the horizon in terms of where people see things going, but the basic fundamentals of the things that hotel operators look at are what you're seeing here, supply. Where's the supply in terms of rooms and availability of rooms? Do we need additional rooms? And these are, you know, reflected here. The demand, obviously, where's the demand coming from both visitors, businesses, in business, leisure visitors and those types of things. Occupancy, that's just basically the percentage of the rooms that are used. The ADR is the average daily room rate, is if you look at it in a whole year, what does it typically go at? If you go today, it's one number. If you go six months from now, it's a different number. Average all that out, that's your average daily room rate. And then RevPAR, which is really a combination of three and four. If you say, well, we've got the revenue of per available room, that's what that number is. Those last three points are really important because not only nationally, but locally here, this submarket, the San Mateo Redwood City submarket, that is the study area, if you will, of this region, as well as the city itself, has seen a 15% annual increase in RevPAR in the last three years since the recovery began in 2009. And the city has also seen the highest levels of transient occupancy tax collected in the first time in 10 years. So there's been a significant return to, you know, the lodging that's currently existing within the city. The next graph really just summarizes the cyclical nature. I thought it was interesting that they called it emotions, but it's the cyclical nature of the hotel industry and where we're at currently is, you know, they speculate it's somewhere over in this area, and that there's additional capacity, which is what their numbers have shown that bear out. In terms of local demand, as I mentioned, there was a 15% annual increase in each of the last three years of revenue per available room, occupancy rates and the like, and that's been reflected both here within the city as well as within the region. It's important to point that out because there's development activity happening here in this region, this San Mateo Redwood City submarket. We're talking about, this is an example of some of the newer product that's been, that's been built. There should have been an article that didn't show up in here. Ah, there we go, thank you. And in last week's Daily Post, there's an article in there about why TOT is so important to cities and what cities are seeing happening. In the case of Palo Alto, they are actually four hotel projects currently in the pipeline. This talks about some of the revenues that they're expecting to generate from those, and these are active projects that are currently being pursued in their jurisdiction. As you may be reading also, OTO Development has been pursuing a project in the city of San Bruno on a small infill site. And in fact, I spoke with their consultant, it's PKF Consulting, who's doing the consulting on that project. And, you know, in their opinion, not only in this region, but in San Carlos, there would be additional demand for additional rooms to be developed at this point in time, given all the things that we've mentioned. Now to make this work, in San Carlos in particular, which has just one freeway interchange, it's a four-way interchange, visibility and access is absolutely critical. It's why obviously the landmark sites became the landmark sites to begin with. They're highly valuable pieces of property, given the fact that they are strategically important. They have the opportunity to be leveraged, and they're sought-after sites by hotel operators who are interested in the area. One of the challenges, of course, that you have is currently, as you, as currently, these sites are all presently developed. So therefore, you need, you need to have a strategy for how you're going to go forward and get these addressed and solved. The city's been working on that, has been working on that historically, but obviously in the last couple of years, up until really this year, we haven't really seen a return in new construction in the market of any significance. And now, now with occupancy rates of 77% and the like, the demand is there for additional supply, and so that's what's happening. It is not the first time that hotels have been discussed. One of the more recent proposals that had been put forward by developer was in 2011. This is the site B, as I understand it, that, I'm not sure if which one is A and which one's B, but I believe this is, this is A? Okay, this is A, thank you. And this involved development of a much more intense development, which is consistent with some of the permitted policies that were in place. You know, the 2.0 FAR, overall, it was 564,000 square feet of buildings, which included 220,000 square feet of office, Class A office. This is a mark, another area where San Carlos is significantly efficient. If you've been to any EDAC meetings lately, they're constantly talking about the need for additional Class A office in this market. It's an area where the city is grossly underrepresented, and everybody else around you are being successful and competing and winning those projects. In addition, this project had envisioned demand for a location for 180-room hotel right in this location. So basically, the idea was a podium development with some underground parking, parking structure over here. It did not include the triangular piece right in this area that's currently as part of the discussions today. So what does all this really mean in terms of economics? Well, as I mentioned, you know, the fiscal benefits are what is really sought after on this project and this location. And just looking at this one property alone, you know, the proposal is to develop, you know, 45,000 square foot fitness center that was, I think, shown earlier, on about a four-acre site, three parcels within the area accounting for just about, just a hair under four acres. The city would generate approximately $227,000 net present value in property taxes from the development of that project. Really no other revenues from that four-acre parcel works out to about $12,000 a year. You know, if there is in their, their plan, as you saw earlier, a design for a future hotel, it's not shows up on this, but it's right over in this area. This is the SING property that's currently there. This is 551 Industrial over here. So this SING property is the site that they had identified as a future hotel use. Whether or not that's economically viable, given the low intensity of development on the balance of the site, it would be very difficult to imagine how that could work. One of the, one of the challenges with this site is in order to really make it pencil, you've got to add additional density overall in the entire project, and this is a very low, low level of development for the, for the area that's there today. Not very different from overall what you're currently seeing. So that was the fiscal benefits, but if you added an additional hotel, obviously hotels do generate a fair amount of transient occupancy tax, as I said, and over, over a 25-year period, that comes out to a net present value of $18 million. That's again, if that second, that other parcel is developed with a hotel. Again, the question is whether or not that would be even be possible, given the configuration of the lot and that type of thing. If you were to go for a more cohesive development, you could get to additional revenues of 18 or even more, $18 million or even more, largely depending on how many hotels you put on the site. That last schematic that I showed you identified 180-room hotel. That's what's included in these numbers, as well as the value from the office uses that are there. In the, in, obviously, if you had two hotels in the site, which a six-acre could certainly support, that number would be significantly more. The other aspect of this is the jobs impacts. While cities are often focused on what they can do to stimulate their local economies, this is tried to put in perspective. We've generated this based upon a model called IMPLAN, which is an economic fiscal impact analysis created by University of Minnesota some years ago, and really identifies the permanent construction jobs that are created by new development. And in this case, we're just looking at the permanent recurring jobs for the entire build-out of both the fitness center concept, as well as a small hotel on the SING property. You'll be looking at a total of 95 jobs, that's direct jobs that are in the buildings, if you will, plus another 15 indirect or induced jobs. And what those are basically representing is the consumer and business-to-business trade that would be triggered by those new 95 jobs coming into the market. In other words, people that go to lunch, those, some of those 95 people go to lunch, they now support some additional business activity in the city. That counts for about 15 indirect jobs within the city in terms of supporting, so not a huge impact in terms of the overall economy. If you look at the other scenario where it was the larger, more intense development that's permitted within the proposal, it would be significantly higher, obviously a lot more square footage adds significantly more jobs, but also a significant amount of indirect induced jobs, which weren't even really accounted for in that fiscal model. I didn't even go back and recalibrate that. But you're talking about almost 700 jobs within the community outside of this project that would be created just by that intensity of that development that's been proposed. So about 1,200 overall. So that really sums up the points on the economics, and I'll turn it back to Lisa.
Thank you, Jim. Certainly, this is a significant question before the city right now, and staff understands that, and we understand the concerns that the property owners have regarding, you know, the parcels that they own. And we understand that, you know, they don't want, you know, additional regulations imposed on them, and we certainly understand that. However, because of the longstanding policy that the city has had for many, many years, and for all the things that we heard about tonight, we maintain our recommendation that the Planning Commission make a recommendation to the city council to adopt these amendments. And again, what we're trying to do is recapture what was current, that was the policies and regulations that were previously in place. They're not brand-new policies, they're actually, you might call them previous policies. And we wanted to make it clear that if the Planning Commission did not recommend, and the city council did not approve, this would actually be a reversal of the policy that we currently have in place, particularly with our 2010 Economic Development Plan, and also some policies that we have in our general plan concerning landmark sites. By not adopting, as we heard, San Carlos's fiscal plans or our economic objectives could be, or actually would be eliminated, and they would be abandoned simply because there are no other sites like these sites within the city. So I just wanted to take a moment and close with those remarks. And to, and to refresh our memory, and for those watching for the first time, we are proposing amendments to four sections, actually five areas of the zoning ordinance. The first is Article 1, where we establish all the zoning districts throughout the city, and we note that landmark commercial would be a new one. In Article 2, regarding our commercial zoning districts, we have our GCI, our neighborhood retail, and landmark commercial would be a new one. The purpose and intent would be amended to include landmark commercial, and as in your packet, all of the modifications listed in the exhibits to the resolution concerning land uses would be amended as well. In Article 4, this is where the city sets forth its requirements and findings for use permits. And again, staff is maintaining their recommendation for the addition of two new findings, which are for regional and destination-oriented uses, and then uses, other uses other than those, you would need to make a finding for one or the other. Article 5 is the city's definitions for terms and use classifications, so of course, we'd add in a couple definitions for the terms we've talked about tonight. And then finally, the zoning map itself would be amended to indicate a new shade or depiction for the landmark commercial zones. So this concludes staff's presentation, and I'll leave up on the slide, staff's recommended motion for the Planning Commission's consideration. As you can see, Community Development Director Al Savay is here, we have our city attorney, Greg Rubin's, Economic Development Manager Mark Sawicki is here, and you've heard from Jim Simon, and we're all available to take any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions for staff?
The first one is for Mr. Rubin's, just so I understand it. If, and I'm just using the fitness center, the proposed fitness center as an example, under the, without making this change, would that fitness center have to undergo any environmental review in order to be built?
The, there would be some environmental review of that project in most cases. It's, it's not really, it's a, all it is is a preliminary proposal, so it's not really a formal proposal. But we'd have a, we'd do our initial study as required by SEQA to figure out what impacts are, would be there, so that, it could be that level of SEQA review. It wouldn't be an exempt project, though.
Even though there isn't a planning permit necessary?
That's right. It's a, it's a potentially, if we identify in the initial study some significant environmental impacts, then you might see a negative declaration.
Well, because what, I mean, what, what, what city action needs to be taken in order to approve the project that would trigger SEQA review?
Well, the, it's the application, it's a project to be an application for a permit would trigger SEQA review.
What permit, the building permit?
The, the application to the city for a building permit or the, or whatever review was required. I think in this case, yes, that under current zoning, the, all that would be required is a over-the-counter application for a building permit.
My next question is, did any of the current landowners, did they ask for an additional permitted use that wasn't provided? I mean, did they make a specific request for permitted use that hasn't been incorporated in the, in the current plan? And I, and I recognize that they've indicated that they don't want any further restrictions based on what you've said, but I'm wondering whether there are any specific uses that they've requested that we haven't provided them?
I mean, it's not like, I mean, we'd like it to be a collaborative process, but we didn't get any suggestions, yeah.
Request for a specific use, okay. And then, why is, what, why is it important that the, they not be able to build any additional? And then, why is, what, why is it important that the, they not be able to build any additional buildings? Why is that, why is that an important requirement?
I think the issue would be that once significant investment is made in the property, it's very unlikely that it's going to be changed again in the near future. So before significant investment is made in a property, I think the city wants to know what it is, and is it consistent with the vision for that area?
But we're not allowing any building of any kind? I mean, would be possible to allow some minor modific, because as I'm understanding as presented, like, no modifications whatsoever can be made to the property? Is that right, or am I misunderstanding?
You could do some modifications to the building for health and safety purposes, or interior remodels and such, but additions or tear downs and rebuilds, again, that we piggyback on to what Mr. Sawicki said. So yes, you could make some modifications, but the concern is, and has been historically, that if you invest heavily or build up or, you know, extensively, then you're moving away from the vision of, the long-term vision of the property.
I have a couple of questions. The first one is for the consultant. How long do sites usually sit before they're developed?
I don't know if there's, I don't know if there's such a thing as usually. I mean, we're in a very slow recovery right now, so I think we're outside of the realm of usually these days.
But is 20-plus years typical?
Well, are these, I, I think for developed sites, it can take a very, very long time. And that's what you've had on this, on this property. If they were undeveloped, you know, notwithstanding other issues with infrastructure access, utilities, things of that sort, and the market's support is there, then those things typically will drive to those sites getting built, built out much sooner. But for developed sites, particularly ones that are parcellized with different ownership, it's, it's not at all unusual. I did a lot of my work in redevelopment around California for the last 22 years, and these types of situations are evident all over the state, and so it's not unusual to see properties sit in this condition for some time.
Okay. Another question I had is, when I looked at your bar graph here, I noticed that Burlingame seems to really skew the numbers.
Yeah.
I mean, when you look at Burlingame, and it's close to the airport, and it's got a lot of hotels, and I just kind of wonder what this graph would look like, and the numbers would probably look a lot different if you really didn't include Burlingame, which happens to be really dependent upon the hotel, upon the airport.
Yeah, I think our point was that-
I'm not necessarily sure this is an accurate representation, although I agree that we're at the lowest. I'm not sure that it's really accurate with all the numbers that you, you put in there for an average.
Yeah, the next, the next highest number was 120, and we're at 66, so.
Right. So one more question. There was a project talked about in 2011 that was presented. Why didn't that work?
Great Recession would be one answer. That wasn't the right answer. Another answer would be the difficulty in trying to assemble the properties. I believe there was also discussions with the GESC neighborhood about what would be acceptable to them. We're not really clear. Another possibility is that that developer won the opportunity to develop in Redwood City, which has a much more aggressive policy for, for development on the parcel that they had, and I think they probably put their eggs in that basket.
We do know that a partner of that same developer was interested in buying 551 Industrial and made a bid for the property, but was unable to secure the property. So there was an intent there very recently to do that.
So that actually brings me to my next question, which is, how much does the city get if the owners don't want to develop this property?
That's a rhetorical question.
Yeah, I mean, if, if the developers do not want to develop this property into a hotel, what does the city get? It gets nothing. So what I'm, I'm kind of getting at is, I don't see the city staff working with the developers at this point, trying to figure out a way to come up with a solution that allows the city to get a hotel, but still allows the, the owners of the property to get the value that they have in their property. So it's just something that, that really sort of bothers me in this whole situation is that I don't really see, I'm looking for the win-win situation here, and all I see is one side's going to lose or the other side's going to lose. So we may come back to that in, in a little bit.
If I could just add on to that, Mr. Chairman, I don't think the city is opposed to a fitness center there. And in fact, we'd, we'd welcome the opportunity to work with the developer or property owners or anybody on a development proposal. We, we had, we had heard about the fitness center, and then we received this concept just, I guess it was Thursday or Friday. So this is the first, you know, drawing that we've seen. We did meet with the developer and, the initial developer, if that's who it is, and let them know we would, we would like to work with them on some kind of a concept and work with them collaboratively. However, you know, without the zoning tools that would allow the city to have some discretion over what occurs there, there's no guarantee that a developer will work with the city, and they don't have to work with the city. So by taking away the tools that the city has to have some assurance that we can have a collaborative process, that the city has some skin in the game, as it were, that's what part of the recommendation is here, is to allow the city to have those zoning tools. It's not to say that there wouldn't be a collaborative process, and city staff has made that very clear, that we're open to that.
Under the existing city guidelines, wouldn't the building that has been proposed at the back of the property actually have to be moved towards the front and actually be close to Old County Road, I mean, Industrial Road?
There could be something in the development standards that potentially there is. I don't recall that for the GCI zone. I know that for residential developments, that is the case. It could be in there. We'd have to look through the zoning code and, I mean, basically, if you're referring to the sea of parking that's in front.
Yes, that's what I was looking at.
Yeah, I mean, that's a very undesirable design from a site planning standpoint. But there may or may not be something in the code about that.
Okay.
Through the chair, through the chair. I did want to remark that my previous answer was probably the, the right answer to the wrong question. There was a proposal in 2008, that's the one that, that I think got caught into the Great Recession. And at that time, the city was working with the property owners and a developer, and we were trying to figure out how to make this work, and there was a difference in values between what the developer would want to pay, what the property owners would want to sell for. At the time, we had redevelopment funds, and that was very much a part of the mix. There was analyses, analyses done. We had closed sessions with council. We were, we were in the mix, and then the Great Recession came. And since that time, we've been struggling with the demise of redevelopment and losing that tool. There are other resources that the city may have that could still be used in this regard if we were able to, to come together again with property owners and a developer on something that worked for everybody.
So the Hunter Storm project that was on one of the slides, that was 2008? Or is that, is that not the project that we're talking about?
That, that was not the 2008 project, but there was a similar proposal.
In 2011?
There was a similar proposal in 2008, similar to the 2011 proposal.
Right. So when you asked me about that?
I was asking about 2011. I have one last question before we get to the public. Mr. Rubin's, I've heard spot zoning mentioned multiple times, and I have a concern that has been raised that we're now looking at Landmark B and Landmark C, and the idea is that Landmark B is never going to be developed as a hotel in the foreseeable future. So we're really looking at one small area, and the concern is that, as a city, we may be accused of spot zoning, that particular area. Could you address that?
Yeah, I'd be glad to, Mr. Chairman. The spot zoning, there's been, there's a long history of court cases that describe spot zoning, and first of all, the, the concept here is to, is not only for landmark hotel, but for potential, potential regional retail uses. I think both of those criteria apply to A and B because they're, what staff has identified is one of the reasons why these parcels or these two areas, if you will, are, are significant, and that one of the bases for making the recommendation is that they're freeway frontage, and they do have the potential to harbor those types of uses. The spot zoning, the cases that have spot zoning are typically one parcel, one, one parcel, not two areas where there's multiple parcels, first of all. The classic cases talk about the city acting arbitrarily or without any justification for, for their, for making a differential zoning for one parcel that's surrounded by other uses. Sometimes the other uses are more intense, sometimes they're less intense. It's, it just depends on the type of case that comes before the courts. This case, in this particular matter, we're, we have studied and analyzed these two areas to make sure that we don't think that there is a spot zoning. I see some of the correspondents that talk about it. You always get the kind of allegations when you have areas that are, that are like this. But they, the two areas, A and B, really do have a lot in common. It just seems like, and the fact that the, the city is trying to encourage the, the best or desired use there, that these types of regional retail or hotel, brings those, those two parcels into a, an area where we can support and make a, make the recommendation. And you can, we're trying to provide you with the evidence to make the findings that there is a basis for treating these areas differently than the other CGI zoning areas that we're carving this out of. I think that it's not only the history of where we were with these parcels, I think that's one of the bases, but they are, they are somewhat unique in the sense that they're different than other parcels in the GCI because of the location where they are and the freeway frontage and the longstanding city policies. Now, we, like, like I said, we're, we've, in the resolution that you are being asked to approve, to recommend, we're, we're trying to address those issues about these parcels and these two areas, and why, why they, why you can justify that type of decision. So I, there's cases where, of spot zoning where literally one parcel was carved out and treated differently than surrounding uses. And cities get into trouble when they're, when they do those types of zoning decisions when there's really no difference that can be identified between that parcel or that area than, than the surrounding areas, and we don't think that's the case here. We think there is significant factual basis to, to make a decision and have a different zoning for this parcel. We have consistency with the general plan and the longstanding policy of the city, the uniqueness to the extent that this, these properties and parcels can be differentiated from other parcels. And we have the rational basis included in the, what you heard before, the economic development and the fiscal aspects of what the city's trying to achieve.
Any more questions for staff?
I just have one, because you both actually asked to the questions I had about spot zoning as well. And I guess this question would be for our consultant. I'm just curious if what goes in the landmark sites doesn't happen to be a hotel, but is maybe a, another permitted use, regional shopping or some other regional destination area, what would be the threshold for significant beneficial employment growth? What, about what number is that?
Well, I don't know that, I don't know that the city's motivations are really as much about employment growth as they are fiscal benefit. So I would start probably by saying that, but in, you know, the, on office use, for example, has a significant amount of employment potential. And so that would be the most intensive, probably in terms of employment generators for the site. Coming down from that, then, you know, your retail, hotel, and others, and even perhaps including a fitness center, would all be about the same number of employment impacts. The really big differences would be on the fiscal impacts to the city, because the city would get, in addition to property taxes, they would get sales taxes from any retail development.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna have the speakers come forward. Michael Tsang?
Tsang? Tsang? All right.
You correct us. How do you say your last name?
Tsang.
Tsang, okay.
So as I said last time, I'm from the landmark site A, 501 Industrial Road, Basial Supply, and we did meet on the 14th with the advisors. And although it sounded like there was some progress, it didn't feel like there was some progress. There was still a lot of restrictions. Everything's under conditional or minor use permit. And if in the future we were to decide to, say, tear down, rebuild, and expand our business, we'd be stuck under a minor use permit as a building material supplier. And essentially, that would place the future of our business under the whim of the planning commission, or at least a planning advisor. So that, that's, that introduces some huge insecurities and uncertainties if the landmark commercial zone is passed. So I mean, San Carlos has treated us very well. We've grown here since '96, and, you know, we hope to stay. We do want to cooperate with you guys and, you know, generate more sales tax, but you guys got to, you know, cooperate with us as well, so.
Do you have any plans to do that, to tear down and rebuild?
Well, Jack is now the owner, my father's the owner, and he's, he's going to transfer it to me, and I do have plans. The building is run down. There is space for growth. That, that, that site is very, is very prime, and, you know, I, I do have plans to redevelop, turn it into a, you know, perhaps a high-quality, you know, the language that the landmark site, landmark commercial introduces, you know, a high-quality architectural design using good materials, of course, so. Yeah, and I hope-
Are there any permitted uses that you would like to have that aren't in here?
Well, everything in the landmark site right now, landmark commercial right now is minor use or conditional use, which, which is, is huge insecurity for me. Like, if I were to redevelop into something else other than Basial Supply, I would still have to come to you guys. Although there are permitted uses, there are footnotes, and only exists in existing buildings. So I can only reuse my rundown building if I were to do something else that is outright permitted.
Are there any other outright permitted uses that you want right now?
Right now, we'd be building material supply. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Weatherby? John Weatherby?
My name's John Weatherby. I'm with Cornish &amp; Carey Commercial. And I've worked with a Tsang family for almost 10 years. I talked with Jack Tsang today. He asked me to come here and speak in, in the family's behalf. I think that, from their, the family's viewpoint, the, the landmark zoning, commercial zoning restricts their ability to operate their business long-term and successfully and profitably. They have long-range plans. Michael's be, will be taking over the business in the future. They want to grow it, they'd like to do other things there within their, the concept of their business. It's a family business, they employ 24 people, 24 families depend on them. They have a number of other satellite businesses, but this is the core. And a few years ago, I looked in their behalf for other sites. We were working with another broker and his developer. And Jack has always said, if he could help the city, he would, but not at his own company's expense or the family's expense. We could not find another suitable site within the parameters of Redwood City, to say San Mateo, that gives them the access off the freeway, the visibility. I mean, people can get in, contractors can get in in the morning, early, they can get out quickly, they can come back at four or five, get their materials, whatever it is. That's critical for the success and growth of their business. You know, they've been there for, since 96, as Mike said, long-term, they, they like to do something. There's some old sheds on the back of the building, maybe renovate them or do a whole new building. But that's, that's a few years in the, in the future. Conditional use permits are restrictive. I mean, it takes all their flexibility out of their plan, you know, out of their planning. It's, it, then it's a city. City can say, these are the restrictions, this is what you have to do. And it can be very time-consuming, expensive, and it can really hurt their, their family business. So I'd hope that the city would look at their needs too, and not just the city. If a hotel developer or operator came to them in the past 20 years, which I don't think has happened, and we've had interest at Hunter Storm, but I don't think there's ever been a hotel operator that said, yeah, I'll come here. And I think, as far as office, the office market is good, but the critical areas that are, what I've found in, in talking with my colleagues in our office, Cornish &amp; Carey, is the downtown office markets, because they have the access to the trains, Caltrain, in the downtown. The young people work for these software companies, they want to be downtown. San Mateo downtown is hot, Redwood City is downtown. I would think that the city should maybe, with all due respect, consider office development downtown. I don't know if any of that property that's, the residential could be used for, for this type of use, but I respectfully ask that the commission consider that. The last thing Jack told me is that, that he would strongly oppose this landmark commercial zoning. And he doesn't say things like that too much to me. So I just want to let you know, he, he's prepared to fight it. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Bullock?
Commissioners, my name is Tony Bullock. I'm with Black Mountain Properties. I was also in attendance on the May 14 meeting along with Michael. I do have some concerns in regards to what I believe was the request of the commission for staff to work cooperatively with us as the property owners. To start with, we weren't given the changes to review prior to the meeting until 4:30 in the afternoon on a Monday for an 8:30 meeting in the morning on a Tuesday. Once in the meeting, we were basically told what the changes were, and asked if we had any questions and allowed to ask questions of the staff. I do respect the staff and, and what they're trying to do, and I understand it, but I don't feel like there's a cooperative spirit that is, is, is being fostered here. They didn't really ask for our input. They didn't ask us specifically what uses we'd like to see permitted. And it's, it's not so much the, you know, specific uses. You know, to give you an example, the only thing that's really permitted under the landmark commercial are the existing uses. If the use were to change, but if there were to, you know, if, if it doesn't change the, the requirement of, as far as, you know, tenant improvements or anything to that effect, it still needs to go through a conditional use permit. For, for Black Mountain Properties, and our business being that we're, we're leasing the, the spaces and the buildings, it's, it's detrimental to us to have further restrictions on the zoning. You know, and, and something that was really concerning to me in that meeting, you know, was to hear Michael Tsang's plans for his property, which, one of the few things that both sides have been able to agree upon, is that the key piece for hotel development is the Tsang property. But to hear Michael lay out his plans for exactly how he'd like to improve his property as his business continues to grow, will be met with resistance because of the conditional use permit requirement he'll have to go through if he wants to redevelop his site. And the fact that staff said essentially his plans will be shot down unless he develops a hotel. You know, as a landowner in that area, Black Mountain Properties being the landowner of 551, that's especially, you know, of concern to us. We've also, from a leasing standpoint, watched as prospective tenants have walked away from leasing that site, willing to put in tremendous amount of tenant improvements to improve the building. And also tenants that have been retail-based tenants that would bring significant retail tax to the city walk away because of their concerns that the, the city, through a CUP process, will dictate the length and terms of the lease, and how long that they can be there. You know, and we're also beginning to hear, you know, rumblings within the brokerage community, the commercial brokerage community, that other prospective tenants who are, who were looking at the site and interested in leasing it, are walking away and going to other cities because they don't really, they don't want to get involved in this. They don't want to have to go through this process. And the uncertainty surrounding where the zoning's going is causing businesses to go elsewhere. So, again, and I stated my opposition at the last meeting, I would urge you guys, please, you know, you know, consider rejecting the motion. And if I may, I'd like to suggest that the council look at and consider, is, is this the best spot for a hotel? And is it a real, a real, a realistic possibility that after 22 years of trying to develop this into a hotel site, is this still a possibility? And if it's realistically not, that we, that we move on and maybe choose another site or other, or look at other possibilities for development in that area? Thank you.
Are there any permitted uses that, that you want that aren't reflected by the proposed zoning changes?
Well, I think from, we'd like to see the GCI uses continue, what's already stated under GCI. What is proposed, my understanding of what's proposed currently is that only the existing uses are permitted without a minor or, or, or conditional use permit. We'd like to see the, the, all the GCI uses carry over as they do today in that area, because that area is currently zoned for GCI.
But any specific uses? I mean, because basically, the, as a-
Well, for what, what it's intended for, those are warehouse buildings, you know, they're, they're industrial warehouse buildings. So any uses relating to that, you know, a concern that I have in regarding the, the changes that extend over to GCI that are also in this proposal, is that a warehouse use, if someone wants to come in and use a warehouse to warehouse product or use it for storage, now requires a conditional use permit. To me, that seems a little strange considering that if a building is a warehouse building, you need a permit in order to store warehouse product. I understand the intent of staff, I posed that same question to them, and the response was that the reason for these changes is because they want to attract more retail use to the industrial area in order to generate more tax revenue, which I understand. And, but, but I, my belief is the market should dictate that. And the market, if, if, if more retail uses would like to come to the industrial area, that's great. But if there, there's also still users that want to store, that need, need storage, need to store product, and they don't want to pay office, office rates, retail rates, they want to pay warehouse industrial rates. So, again, my, is there a specific use? Not necessarily. Especially from BNP's perspective, we cater to small businesses, and all our spaces are in size from 1,000 square feet to, to 3,000 square feet generally. And we try to cater to, you know, as large or broad type of user as possible. We also take pride in the fact that we've always worked very closely with the city to bring in tenants that we believe, you know, fit with the vision that they, that the city has for the areas in which we own property. We're also very quick to remind tenants, potential tenants, as they come in, to speak with the city, make sure their use is, is reviewed and appropriate for, for the area. So I don't have a direct answer. Is there a specific use? I would just like to continue to see the GCI uses be permitted for the landmark commercial area, and not be so restrictive that it, it makes it tough for the owners to, to grow with their properties and for companies like us to realize a return by putting in a good tenant for both us and for the city from a tax revenue basis. Thank you.
Jim Hartnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and planning commissioners. My name is Jim Hartnett. As you know, I represent the Pay family. Submitted a letter in connection with the prior hearing and another one for tonight. And I know it's been noted for the record that you've received it. So I'm not going to just reiterate what's in, in the two letters. But I'm happy to have had the benefit of the, the staff discussion and the economic consultants' comments with respect to the, the properties and your legal counsel's discussion of spot zoning. And I'd like to react to some of their comments, not having seen them in advance of tonight. You know, as to a change in the vision of the landmark sites, I think it's undeniable that the city itself, by its own actions, have, has changed the vision. The In-N-Out Burger site is just such a, a great example of that. The city owned the site. The city didn't have to sell it for an In-N-Out Burger site, which, Mr. Chair, as you pointed out, isn't going anywhere. Probably in our lifetimes and beyond, I would say in my grandkids' lifetimes. And I don't have grandkids yet. It's going to be there a long time. And, and the, the storage facility next to it is not going anywhere. But I think it's really telling that in a landmark site in which the city owned property, it didn't, geez, say, you know, I think I'll enact, I should ask the council to enact an interemergency ordinance to prevent In-N-Out Burger from going in, because they're going to destroy the, that landmark site for a potential hotel. Of course not. The city said, I'm going to sell the property, make some money on it, and have a use there that's totally inconsistent with what the vision was in 1991. So, you know, I think it's very difficult to say that, that the vision of the city hasn't degraded based upon the city's own actions. And then the marketplace. My goodness, it's been pointed out over and over and over again that the vision has been in place since 1991, in good times and in bad times. And in none of those times has there been a successful proposal in the landmark site A to accomplish what the city believes should, should be there for the city's economic objectives. Now, those economic objectives can be accomplished in a number of ways. There was discussion of, well, Redwood City was more aggressive, and so maybe the Hunter Storm folks went to Redwood City because they were a little more aggressive. Actually, Redwood City owned the property. They went out for proposals, and Hunter Storm and others said, we're really interested because you, the city, own this. And you want to make something good out of it for the city. And you're going to enter into a very sophisticated, complex development agreement with whoever is the successful proposer, to develop it to accomplish the city's economic objectives because the city owned the site. The city doesn't own Landmark Site A. The city has zoning ordinances that permit the kind of development that has been proposed in concept that you received on Friday. That's an example of what can happen to promote actual good quality economic development, which it was hard to see in, in the concept proposal on the screen because the, the staff notes were written over the hotel site that still could be there on the corner. This conceptual proposal accommodates, if the corner site could ever be sold to a hotel developer, the, the concept accommodates that. And in fact, as indicated, an egress-ingress easement would be put in place, so that could be a hotel site, should there ever be a demand for it. Well, you know from the evidence in front of you that the owner doesn't want to sell. That corner site is not going to be sold now, it is not going to be sold in the foreseeable future. They have an economically useful function there that does well for the property owner, is reasonable use for the city, it, it is what is suitable for that site. Now, the, the staff has talked about redevelopment tools, you know, and, and unfortunately, I, I'm a big proponent of redevelopment powers, and there are no more. But the redevelopment powers would, would have allowed the city to accumulate the parcels itself. That's the point of redevelopment. Let the city buy the parcels, accumulate them, and then it becomes the kind of site that the city wants to be able to flip and sell to a private developer who is willing to invest. That tool is not there now. And so what the city is doing by the staff-recommended proposal is locking in my clients to a use that is not economically beneficial anymore for the, for the, for the owner, a disincentive to invest in their current buildings, which are tired and, and need investment, a disincentive to any potential purchaser who would tear down the buildings and put up a high-quality development that would still be consistent with the city's vision potentially for a hotel on this site. In fact, the, a fitness center is considered to be an ancillary use in, in, in the proposed zoning that could be next to and is ancillary to a hotel. Under current zoning, the city can move its vision forward if ever there is someone who can acquire that corner site. Now, there's no doubt that cities love to have hotels, as presented by the economic consultant. But a, a study does not necessarily create reality. A study comments on, from an academic perspective, what could be. I submit to you that the city can make a ton of money from transient occupancy tax, which you get to keep all of, by developing one of your parks into a hotel site. Now, you could generate a lot of money, but you, you always wonder, well, is that the best use for this site? The city owns it, why not put a hotel on a park? Because it, you know, you need parks. And, and the city, even though it owns the site, isn't going to just change that use to make money. It doesn't represent the values of the community to do that, and there is a need for parks, there's a need for more parks, we, we always know that. There is a need for a fitness center. Why do we know that? Because that's what someone is willing to accumulate the parcels that are for sale to accomplish. A high-quality fitness center that would represent good-looking facility in which there, in fact, would be regional demand. You know what, you know from your own experience, I'm sure, the high demand for these kinds of facilities. And sites are not easy to come by. This is a site which has willing sellers that can accomplish this. It's, it's, it's a perfect use for that. It's, it's, it would add to the quality. It certainly would be an improvement on what is there now. My final point would be this. My final point would be this. The issue with spot zoning. Now, I've articulated my legal points in the letters, and I'm not going to go over those. Mr. Rubens and I have known each other for a long time, and we've been in court together. And I respect his legal views. He's a wise counsel and gives you good advice. But I can tell you this, that he and I have been in court many a time and had surprising results in front of the judiciary in San Mateo County on land use issues. And so it is a complicated area of the law. There's no doubt about it. And spot zoning, there's lots of cases on it. And I just would like to caution you that it is not as clear, it's not as black and white, as any of us would like it to be. Because if it were, it would be easier to deal with. So I just caution you on that. And I would simply ask, as I did in my letter, to have you consider directing this back to staff as it relates to my client's property, to consider how this fitness center, which is permitted now as a matter of right, could fit into the plan so that this could move forward, consistent with the city's goals of preserving an opportunity should it ever come for that corner site. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Steve Mitchell.
Commission and Chairman. I'm Steve Mitchell with Black Mountain Properties. Having just watched a pretty powerful slideshow at What Might Be with all the funds that might come to the city, I'll scrap my first page of what I was going to say to you. You've received my letters, you've received our legal counsel's comments. And as I sit here and watch the presentation that occurred with a lot more time than I had to prepare a PowerPoint presentation, I have to ask you, what if you wanted a Four Seasons Hotel, but it never came? Would you limit, restrict, and punish existing property owners and businesses? It just seems like we've got a lot of reasons why there's going to be a long time before this happened, or happens, if it ever does. If you go to the section, and I heard Al Savae say, there are no uses that have been denied by this, I disagree. We're currently losing a tenant who wants to do a use here but can't because of time constraints on their lease term, the amount of money they want to spend on the space, or the improvements they want to make. The similar type of situation will occur, and I disagree again with Al that they're not limiting us, if we try to sell. We've seen very clearly in the information that's before you, in the red highlighted section, I take you to City of San Carlos, page 353 and 354, your red font. Go to item B. As property owners, Black Mountain Property. And I'll let you flip to that. Go to B. It's pretty clear there. Erection of permanent buildings inconsistent with regional retail and destination-oriented uses shall not be permitted. If you come in with something you want to do, and I won't read all this to you because you've got it. I've highlighted "may be considered," but it sure as well better be for health and safety, and it better not get any bigger than the footprint of the building, or you're going to have some trouble. We go down a little farther, and we talk about interim uses, and we say they may be renewed, may be renewed on a periodic basis, subject to planning commission permitting. Try to attract a tenant who's going to put in $800,000, considering eight-year term with hopeful an option to renew, and his legal and his senior real estate group maybe is going to get to be there? So in essence, no interim use in the LLC-zoned area but a permanent structure unless it's a hotel or a large retail business producing sales tax. I also heard a comment earlier that was stated that a health club would not be permitted, but I sat in the meeting, that would be permitted and would be considered. But this plan had just been presented to them. In the meeting where the landmark property owners gathered, five to eight of us, it was clearly stated by Al, I would certainly consider attending or being a participant in something like that, but quite frankly, it doesn't generate sales tax. Pretty strong message to send to the Page, I'd say. How are they going to get a developer to come in and work with them based upon that? We have the same problem. They just have a different twist on it. It's definitely our opinion that there haven't been effective changes. This ordinance greatly limits current property owner's ability to negotiate leases with diverse businesses. We've lost two, we'll probably lose more for 551 Industrial. It seriously impacts us financially. If you can't see that, then you don't understand our business. And these are, once again, my opening statement. Small businesses who've had small tenants who bring retail sales, they bring people into the town, they're in warehouses, they're in our spaces, they're in tankage spaces, they're up and down industrial road. And as Tony Bullock alluded to, we're now going to, if it is, I believe, empty for more than six months, have a small user come in, and they are going to, when they barely can put together financials to pass to get in to start their startup company, they're going to spend $2,500 to maybe get a use permit? Our real estate agents are telling us it's not going to happen. They're already going to other cities. So it creates an incredible competitive disadvantage to Black Mountain Properties because of what is happening in the GCI zone. And if you go into the landmark zone, we're strapped. Our only choice is to fight this, and we will. I would ask that the planning commission decline to adopt the staff recommendation as to changing the zoning and leave the GCI-zoned areas and keep the existing in places unmodified. Thank you.
Thank you. John Blake.
Good evening to members of the commission. I'm here to speak on behalf of Black Mountain Properties. The vision driving the staff's proposed zoning amendments has existed for 22 years, but it remains just that, a vision. It has yet to materialize. The market has not produced it with or without the influence of city government. And if the market will not produce it, then how is it going to happen? Should it happen? But rather than listen to what the market is telling us, which is to reexamine the vision, staff wants the city's policymakers to double down on that vision. Staff is telling us that by applying the necessary medicine, the zoning amendments, the city's policymakers can force the market to produce the vision. Stripped to its essentials, what the staff is proposing is to keep out or squeeze out viable prosperous businesses and hence depress the value of the land that houses them in order to force the owners of that land to sell it for the sake of a vision that remains a mirage. Something is wrong with a vision that depends for its realization on force. The staff's message is that same old seductive refrain that the end justifies the means. But the wrong means will never produce the right end. These zoning amendments are the wrong means, and you should treat them accordingly. You should either take no action on them, or you should recommend to the city council that the city council reject them. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe, you're the last speaker unless somebody else would like to speak. Please fill out a form. Joe? Okay, Joe, why don't you come up, and then we'll have the Page speak afterwards.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight. For the people that don't know me, my name is Joe Bullock, and I do own Black Mountain Properties and Sparky's Hot Rod Garage, which I'm sure some of you have been to and enjoyed. Also own Black Mountain Spring Water Company, established here in the city of San Carlos back in the '30s. So we're a longtime resident here in the city. I grew up here in San Carlos. I went to Arundel School. I went to Britton Acres. I graduated from San Carlos High. San Carlos High School property was built on our property, condemned for educational purposes, and they built a great high school on it. Today, it's gone, unfortunately. But I wanted to give you a little bit of background behind me, because I grew up here in this town. I went to the San Carlos Theater. I went to the Laurel Theater. I went to the Tugole Theater. You know, I've seen the town grow. I've seen what has gone on in 50 years in this community, probably longer than anybody else. I don't think staff has seen the town grow the way that I've seen it grow. I currently own 300,000 square feet here in the city of San Carlos, industrial buildings, warehouses, retail. And people know that I own a considerably large chunk of ground off of the Alameda where the Black Mountain Water Company site was, hopefully to be developed here in the near future. I bought 551 Industrial Road. I bought it as an investment. I also built the 985 Building, the office building on the corner of Britton and the 101 Turnoff, which the city of San Carlos and myself are partners in because you guys own the land underneath that building. I leased it from you for 45 years. We went through a great partnership, and still it's a great situation. You know, I built the office building on El Camino next to Walgreens, the old Black Mountain Water Company building. I've built some beautiful buildings in the town and have been recognized for the office buildings and the architecture and the remodeling of the buildings. The latest one's on Branson Road, which needed a huge facelift, which I did. 551, which is part of the landmark site, I went in and bought that before all this started. Yeah, there was other people bidding on it, but why did I prevail? Because I had a good, clean offer, and I was willing to go in, put some money in the building, make it look great, which I think anyone of you, if you drive by, will acknowledge it. Building looks great. I cleaned it up. I put over $150,000 in it to clean it up so the city could be proud of it. So over the years, I've tried to make an impact with the city and tried to make the city proud of the products that I've built and designed. And yeah, John Page's property next door, the 551, you know, has been offered to me. And yeah, I could buy the property and combine it with 551 and build an office building there. But, Commission, there's no market for it. If there was a market for it, I'd be doing it. San Carlos is my home base. This is where I've made my living. You know, I've employed up to 500 people at times in this city. I mean, there's no market for it. And I hear all this rhetoric about a hotel. I would love to see a hotel, office building, conference center on that corner, but it's not the right corner. Number one, you've got traffic problems. And again, John talked about In-N-Out Burger. The city owned that piece of property. The city came to me and asked me to develop that property at one point in time. I said, no. That was the better site to put a hotel on because you don't have the traffic issues. You come off the freeway, you turn right, you turn right into the complex. If you come off a Holly Street, what do you got to do? You got to turn left. You got to turn into traffic, into Holly Street. Then you got to turn left again across Industrial Road in more traffic. You've got serious traffic impact problems here. Then you've got another problem of Holly Street. How do you get from Industrial Road to Old County or to El Camino on Holly Street? There's other problems that need to be resolved, other than trying to bootstrap landowners at the landmark site. And that's what the city staff is trying to do. And the city staff is not being very transparent. They're not working with the landowners at all. They're not working at all with them. They want you to believe they are, but they're not working with us. All the landowners are here, 100% of them. They're all in favor of leaving the GCI zone. Leave it the way it is. Let the market dictate what needs to go out there, not the city staff. They don't own property here. We own property here. We're local people. We're citizens of San Carlos. City staff, I don't even know if the city staff even lives in San Carlos. But transparency needs to be also brought to the attention here. And the city staff needs to work with the landowners if they want to get something done. And they're not working with the landowners at all. And, you know, do the landowners really want to sell? I'm sure they would. They'd sell at the right price. I brought it up at the last meeting, if the city really wants this piece of property and that landmark site, I'll sell them my piece. I even made that offer to the staff already. I've even made the offer to the staff to trade the piece. Sure, I lease property from you guys. You guys want a piece of property? I'd be glad to trade it for you. But they've come up with some ridiculous price. I mean, if you want to work, let's work cooperatively with the staff. But they need to be transparent. And if the city wants to develop a hotel, a restaurant, a conference center, okay, that's fine, but let them own the property. Let them take the risk. We'll sell it to them. I'm sure I'll sell my piece to the city at fair market value. I don't have a problem with that. And I'm sure the other landowners probably wouldn't have a problem with it too if they want to pay fair market value for that property. And then let the city develop a hotel there. But you got to understand, the market for hotels in San Carlos and conference centers just isn't there. I mean, you're competing with Hotel Sofitel. You're competing with the big office towers out there in Foster City and Redwood Shores. San Carlos doesn't have that market. I can bring in all kinds of financial consultants to prove that. But it's not there. San Carlos doesn't have the basis to support that. And believe me, I'd love to have it there. But, you know, the In-N-Out Burger, a perfect example. They owned that property. They had a perfect opportunity to rezonate or to control it or buy out the mini warehouse and develop an office or hotel conference center there. They didn't do it, but they could have. But now they're trying to bootstrap us because it's one of the last sites. Circle Star, another example. City could have built a hotel there, which there is a small hotel there. They could have built a conference center there. But they want to use our money to do it and strap us. Yeah, we've lost tenants on the 551 building already, and we're going to probably lose more tenants as well because we don't have the ability to lease it. Yeah, the city, once you go through a CP zoning, they're going to control the number of years that we can put on a lease. So I urge you to turn this thing down. Turn it down. Let the market dictate what goes on that site. Let the landowners, you know, improve that corner while the city works on the other issues in the city that they need to work on in order to bring hotels to this site. What's better? I mean, it'd be a great, have a great conference center here for the city and a great hotel and a great restaurant. Good friends of mine, the Bohannans, Hillsdale Mall, they're trying to put in a four-story complex and a big hotel on the corner of Marsh Road in 101. I talk to Dave and Scott all the time. They can't get a hotel to go in there. And they own Hillsdale Mall, and they've got all the wherewithal in the world. How in the hell is San Carlos going to get a hotel to go in on the landmark site? Won't happen. Won't happen. And I saw the, I've seen the layouts of the office buildings and the hotels, but yeah, they're concepts. That's all they are. Because the landowners aren't willing to sell. So how are they going to build a hotel, restaurant, when the landowners aren't willing to sell? It's not free enterprise when the city tries to tell you what to do, how to lease your property, how many years you can lease it, what can go in it. I mean, it's not fair, and I'm not, I'll work with the city in any way I can to help them get what they need under fair circumstances, but I'm not going to do it at my risk. get what they need under fair circumstances, but I'm not going to do it at my risk and I'm not going to let the other landowners, you know, take a beating at the same time. I mean, I have all kinds of tenants in the city of San Carlos and, you know, the commission knows that. And I'm continuing to spend, you know, millions and millions and millions of dollars in this next 24 months. I'm planning on spending upwards of close to $50 million into this community, but not with these kind of conditions and staff trying to tell me what to do and how to do it and how long I can lease my buildings and what kind of tenants I can put in there for their goofy idea about putting a hotel in there, a big hotel. It won't happen. I've been here for 62 years and it hasn't happened yet. And the market has been plenty ripe for one to go in there. San Carlos can't support it. They just cannot support it. I wish they could because that would make my business a lot better as well. And I've tried by building office buildings in here, in the town, but the city can't support it. And that's why it hasn't come. Burlingame, yeah. Palo Alto, yeah. You've got the venture capital world down there. You've got the attorneys. You know, they bring in a lot of people from out of state that need hotels. Burlingame, yeah, great. They've got the airport. What have we got? San Carlos Airport? A lot of people don't come in internationally in San Carlos looking for a hotel, you know. So, I mean, that's, you know, I'm not a highly educated guy, so I just work hard and I use a lot of common sense and I urge you to just don't approve this thing. And I'll do what I can to help and, but I urge you not to approve it and not send it, and don't send it to the council. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate it and thank you for, I know I ran over the two minutes or so, but thank you very much.
Just a couple of minutes over.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Danielle Pei. I own the properties at 595 Industrial Road and 850 East San Carlos. I feel like we're all here and it's my fault. Just so that you do know, in those two buildings that I own, on the corner at 595 Industrial Road, we have a business known as Pay's Place. And it is a gym. It is a fitness center for adults and children. And when we bought it, it was a big, old, ugly Praxair warehouse. We spent a lot of money converting it. And we have a lot of, we have over, you know, 1,000 clients. On weekends, probably 500 local families from all over the peninsula come in with their kids and play basketball and volleyball. And I think it's been a great benefit to the community. At 850 East San Carlos, we also have some instructional and recreational tenants. We have a theater group, the Bay Area Theater Group, that is one of our tenants. We have a dance studio. We have Team TAFF, which is a fitness center and private training. We also have a cheerleading trainer and we have a couple of industrial uses as well, car, storage, operator, and a cabinet maker. So, if you were to ask me whether or not my current use is permitted under these changes, the answer would be no. If I were to vacate my business and not release my property at 595 Industrial Road, another gym could not come in and take my place unless they did it within six months. If I wanted to tear down my building or expand my building to service the community that I'm servicing right now, I could not do that with these changes. I can only do that if the zoning is left as it is. It's very disheartening to know that because we have been approached by a developer who's interested in building a first-class fitness center, better than the one that currently exists there, that that's raising all this fuss because it's a permitted use, but the city doesn't want it because it doesn't generate enough income. And so they're willing to allow landowners who've taken on financial risk to have their properties devalued for the city's benefit, who haven't taken any risk. There was a period of time where the city could've invested in these properties and had redevelopment dollars and did not. Additionally, I think I want to point out that Ed Storm is my father-in-law and he's family. And so, the proposal that was put in front of you by Mr. Simon is a family proposal. That was the Hunter Storm proposal. That was our proposal. And we've been working, trying to make the city's vision come true for the last several years, and it just doesn't happen. The Sings are not going anywhere. Jack Singh is not interested in selling his property. And I think what is before you is a great start to getting the city's vision jump-started here. You get a great fitness center. You get the egress to the future site for the hotel on Jack Singh's property, which is where any hotelier would want to be if it's going to happen at all. So I urge you, please do not change the zoning requirements. It would affect my business staying where it is, as it is. It would affect my tenants continuing to operate as they are right now and it affects my development potential. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Go ahead.
So what happened to the 2011 Hunter Storm development?
Number one, Jack Singh was not interested in selling his property. So, without, you know, without that, it was a proposal. We were able to get other landlord, I mean, you've heard it. We can get all the landowners, all the property owners to kind of play ball here except for the Sings.
And it just couldn't be done without them?
No. No one wants to put a hotel unless it's on the corner.
So the question I have for you is about the proposal that we saw where the athletic center is essentially way back against the freeway.
Freeway, yes.
And the question I would ask is, would you be amenable to moving that forward where your existing building is? And that would potentially allow for, if down the road, the Sings did decide to sell, that creates the area around the corner and along the freeway as a potential hotel site? Is that something you would be willing to discuss with staff?
I'm sure, so I am not the developer on this. I'm selling the properties to the developer. It's his proposal, but as far as I know, the developer is willing to work with staff. The developer has the fitness center tenant in tow, so it's a bill-to-suit. The tenant, is my understanding, they want some signage, recognition, you know, presence along the freeway. I'm sure that that could all be worked out as well as other, you know, details with regard to landscaping, width of egress-ingress to the hotel property. Absolutely, that could be worked out with staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening and thank you for giving me the chance to speak. A lot's been said about the city's vision and I've been tracking these properties for a long, long time, since the late 90s, and I've seen the city's vision evolve. I grant that there's always been a desire to see a hotel development take place over the course of the last 22 years, and it hasn't materialized. But, the general plan and zoning were modified, correct me if I'm wrong, it was 2008 or 2009, and the zoning was modified to become more inclusive. Ed Storm has tried a number of times to make a development work here. He tried in 1999 and 2000. The economy took a turn for the worst. He actually owned the 850 East San Carlos Avenue property at that time. Also, at that time, as if you'll reread my letter dated May 6th, there was restrictive zoning in place similar to what's being proposed now, requiring conditional use permits, limiting uses, limiting the amount of time that a tenant could occupy a space under a specific use. The property became virtually unrentable. There was graffiti. There were vagrants in the building. Police had to be called out. Code compliance had to be called out. The building was very poorly maintained. And creating a disincentive for property owners to maintain their property, such as this zoning would enact, limiting the ability to lease these buildings will lead to blight and it will lead to decay. The vision that was modified with the most recent general plan and zoning was more inclusive and it allowed and does still allow for a hotel development to take place if economic conditions or opportunities so dictates. But it also allows the properties to flourish and be occupied and utilized and maintained and not become a burden on city services or a blight on the community. So, this zoning is going to create some, this proposed zoning change will have some unintended consequences. And I would like to say that there were some specific uses that were requested to be approved uses at the meeting with staff. I heard a request for personal storage. I heard a request for warehousing. And I heard a request for auto storage. Also, there was a request to clarify the language for instructional services. In the 850 East San Carlos Avenue building, there are several uses right now that would be classified as instructional services and we felt there was some ambiguity with the wording that it could just be more clearly stated. And in the haste to push this agenda, we were told that that wouldn't be considered. I would say regarding the use permit fees of $2,564 and $5,128 respectively, that doesn't take into account the impact on tenants for hiring consultants and architects and meeting with conditions that are imposed such as Americans with Disabilities Act compliance. It doesn't take into account the loss of revenue that a property owner would encounter. If it's a 90 or 120-day process and there's a tenant that's ready to go and ready to sign a lease and ready to pay rent right away, there's, and yet they're still willing to go through the conditional use permit process, which is a high hurdle. Again, that's an added cost to the property owner. There's, in each and every case, a period of time during which that property owner can't collect rent and maybe it's typically 120 days. I would like to say that Mr. Simon gave a great academic argument for hotel development, great academic argument. In fact, I was very impressed with the numbers from two hotels. Taking it one step further, I wonder how, there's five properties in the landmark site A. I wonder how good the numbers would look if five hotels were developed there. As I stated in my letter May 6th, I've been marketing these three of the properties, two of the three, I take that back, I've exclusively listed two of the five properties since November. I've been aware at least one and possibly two of those properties would be available for sale also. I've talked to hotel developers far and wide. I've presented the properties to at least 40 hoteliers. I have no offers. If there was a hotelier that wanted to make an offer to develop these properties, believe me, I would be waving it and saying, "Guess what? I've got a great solution for everybody involved." But that solution does not exist. We're talking about fiscal benefits here. This latest policy only fiscally benefits the city coffers. It has a very negative impact on all of the property owners. I would also like to cite some of the PKF statistics in my May 6th letter. In December 2012, hotel motel occupancy rates for the San Jose Peninsula region were The average daily room rates were $131.97. For the months of February 2013 and February 2012, the occupancy rates respectively were 76.1% and 76.3%. Average daily room rates were $151.84 and $142.06 per night. These rooms, these rates, occupancy rates and room rates do not support new hotel development. We have a fitness center that would be interested in possibly locating here. I will say adjacency to the highway is critical for them. That is a showstopper if they can't get adjacency to the highway. Their proposed concept would be 45 feet tall, so if there was a future opportunity to build a hotel, let's say along Industrial, I'm sure the property owner at that time would come back and say, "Look, we've got a field of surface parking here. We can build a parking structure. We can build a hotel." And it would be higher than the fitness center, so maybe if it was a six-story structure, it would peak over the top of the 45-foot fitness center and give highway visibility to a hotel. So, the way that the conceptual drawing was laid out, it does a number of things. One, it provides an easement access to Jack Singh's property, the 501 Industrial, which again is the most desirable location from a hotelier standpoint. And also, given that it's set up against the highway, if there ever is demand for greater density on these properties that are in play right now, there's a parking field that could be developed as a hotel and a parking structure could be put in place to accommodate future parking. But again, we've been marketing these sites to hoteliers and we have no offers.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. My name is Jill Benitez. I'm with Embarcadero Capital Partners and we are property owners of a six-building, small six-building industrial R&amp;D property on Industrial Road, not within the landmark site. And I guess I wanted to take a little bit of that perspective because there are other elements of what you're proposing that do affect us. They've been alluded to here by a couple of people and that relates specifically to the change in the zoning designations, specifically with regards to, in my site, warehouse use. These buildings, as someone else has mentioned, these buildings were built as warehouse buildings. They have some office use contemporarily. We have, over the course of years, converted a couple of the uses. There's now some laboratory use in some of those buildings, but we have warehouse in those buildings. They're built that way. They're built height that way. The structure is that way. The mechanical systems are built for warehouse use. So, I think that it would definitely place a change in value to us to have a conditional use permit attached to any ongoing changes. A six-month, it's not, a six-month transition between one tenant and another tenant in today's market is, that would be great. I'd love to see six months transition after a tenant left. It's not unusual to have vacancies of a year or two years in this kind of market. And under the proposal that you've, that's sitting before you, you know, we would lose the ability to automatically transition one warehouse user to another warehouse user without having to go through the CUP process. The other thing I would want to mention, I don't, you know, I don't know what everyone's specific situation is, but there are different parking ratios required for the higher uses. The office uses and retail uses have a denser parking ratio. And some of the existing facilities that are buildings that are built on Industrial Road that are, were built as warehouse uses won't have that kind of parking. And so, or may not have that kind of parking. And that's going to create additional problems downstream if the use is changed from how they were originally conceived and how they were proposed initially and approved initially as warehouse use to going as warehouse use to going to either office or retail use. So again, I would urge you, just from that viewpoint alone, aside from all the other considerations with the landmark site, that element of changing the zoning regulations, I think would have certainly a negative impact on our ownership of that property. And we own the property, just for the record, it's from 1501 to 1599 Industrial Road. Right? Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all I have for speakers, cards. Going once, going twice, no more speakers. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move that we close public hearing?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Questions?
Not questions so much at this point, but I guess comment or discussion?
Yep.
If that's okay.
Discussion.
Well, I guess when reviewing all the information as presented at this meeting and the previous meeting in regards to the landmark commercial district, it occurs to me that what we're essentially being asked to do, at least on some level, is to answer the question, is the vision of a hotel in that, in these areas still feasible or still valid, I guess? And I grappled with this quite a bit, in part because I don't know that it's the planning commission's purview to override certain provisions of the general plan that seem to strongly indicate that that is the vision. I mean, that was a document put together over many years and many, many, many meetings to articulate a vision. I don't know that these two quick meetings are the right place to, I don't know, flip Having said that, I'm also very sympathetic to the property owners, understand that restrictions, particularly on tenant improvements and on shorter leasing agreements, clearly make getting new tenants more difficult. It obviously would be a challenge. I'm also uncomfortable with the idea that more permitted uses somehow negate the idea of having a hotel down the future. So I really don't know what to say, is what I'm so not articulating properly. But these are the questions that I have in my mind. Not comfortable, not comfortable going for the motion because of some challenges, but not comfortable going against it either because I think it reverses the general plan, which is, in my opinion, a guiding light of how we make decisions about the city. So, there you go. So, all right. So there I am. Those are my concerns.
Okay. Next?
I'll come back in a second.
Okay.
I guess, am I missing, I feel like I must be misunderstanding this document because folks keep saying with certainty that they're not able to change any use without getting either a conditional use or a, I'll call it a mini, a mini, mini permit.
Minor.
A minor permit. But aren't there eight permitted uses that you can, can you help me with this? It looks to me, I'm looking at this and I see eight permitted uses, and you don't have to be actually performing one of the, I mean, as far as footnote four is concerned, it doesn't say that you have to be using that particular use in order to continue that use. Aren't there eight permitted uses in the landmark, in the proposed landmark district? Or am I misreading this?
No, I think that is correct. There's actually nine.
Oh, did I miss one? See, I got.
The last one is general retail.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Maybe I'm.
Oh, no, it's nine. I miscounted. So there are, so there are nine uses.
Yeah.
And if you want to do one of those nine uses, as long as you can use, do it in the existing buildings, you can do that without a staff permit, right?
That's correct.
I think that's the.
I mean, I just, it seems like there seems to be some misunderstanding among the public about that because it seemed like a bunch of people were saying that that wasn't the case, but it does, it is the case, right?
Right. And where it does say that there's a C or an M, it doesn't mean that the use is not permitted. I think, like everybody said, it does require some discretion by the city and that's, I think, what some people, you know, they don't, aren't interested in doing that.
I mean, to echo, although I shouldn't put words in your mouth, I mean, it is, there's no question that the property owners of the, of these properties, that this is affecting, potentially affecting the value of their property, the value of their investment. And it has the potential, I suppose, to lower the value of that investment. And it's, it's for the benefit of the city. And as a policy matter, the question is, well, is the benefit of the city significant enough to, I guess, to ask those citizens, you know, to take that hit? And, I mean, I guess I'm inclined in light of the fact that this has been longstanding policy because it's reflected in the general plan and because, I mean, we have staff members who know a lot more about this stuff than I do, that as far as whether this could be a hotel, that, you know, I'm prepared to, I'm not going to say defer, but to rely on staff, that when they say it can be done, it can be done because they have no incentive to say otherwise. Because these harms that are legitimate, that are being raised, that, you know, these are going to become blighted properties, I mean, that's bad for the city. And I would assume that if staff truly believed that that to be the case, that they wouldn't be making this recommendation. So, I mean, I'm inclined, unless someone convinces me otherwise, to make the motion, which may be denied. I would like to give staff a time to explain, why is it 20 years, 21 years? Why hasn't, why hasn't this been done in 21 years? And why, in light of the fact it hasn't been done for 21 years, do we have reason to expect that it's going to be done sometime in the foreseeable future?
And I, I'd be happy to answer that question. I guess you can look around town and you can see that, you know, there has been change, particularly along the 101 corridor. In fact, I think we have a slide that shows, Lisa, if you can bring that slide up, it shows land use change over the last 20 years in the 101 corridor there. And it shows all the locations where we have had change. Maybe not in this particular location, but you see all those businesses there, PAF, Homestead Suites, there's some businesses across on the other side, the Skyway property, as we noted, even the environmental center, we have another business on the other side. I can't really read it from here, but there has been change. These are all buildings that have been constructed after 1996, all that change. And it's precisely because that's our main corridor, you know, it's the Highway 101 corridor. It's the most highly visible location for commercial and industrial development in our community. So this just kind of shows you that change does happen. Sometimes it does take a long time. Another great example is the Wheeler Plaza Development Project. That's been talked about for 15 years or so, since the 90s. And we're now nearing fruition of that development project, but it took years and years to do that. And the city acquired, some people said, yeah, well, the city should acquire the property. In some cases, the city can do that, in other cases, we can't do that. So, and I think Mr. Sawicki added earlier, there's changes in the economy, there's upturns and downturns in the economy. So there's many different factors that, that affect change over time. There's an example. One thing I would like to point out is, is one of the things that we heard about the uses is, we heard a number of different things and staff did make a number of changes to the uses. It used to be all conditional uses the last time we brought it here. What we heard is that there's a concern that if, for instance, the pays properties aren't able to be sold to a developer, that a new person might want to use the buildings and just refill them with new tenants. And so we took that into consideration. There was some discussion about how the property could become dilapidated or unusable or whatever over time. But what we wanted to do is make it easy for the new owner to change uses in that building. And so a lot of these permitted uses, we looked at what was there. And if we missed a couple of things that make it hard, then we're open and you should consider looking at some of those uses. And one use that I would like to talk about is warehousing and indoor warehousing and storage and outdoor storage. There's a couple of things there.
That's on page 31.
One of the reasons, yeah. In the GCI and LC zone, you can see it on, in the use categories there, where in indoor warehousing and storage, we changed it from permitted in the GCI to a C and then a conditional use permit in the land use commercial zone. You know, we recognize that a lot of these buildings were constructed for that use. And one of the concerns that we had is the changeover of those warehousing uses to personal storage, which is actually a prohibited use in our zoning. And one of the uses, I think, that, you know, the city has decided to not allow more of because, again, they don't generate any, anything for the city in terms of property taxes, retail sales taxes. I think the city staff would be comfortable changing the GCI zone to back to permitted if in the definition, we were able to say that it excludes personal storage uses. I mean, we, and we also said that you could use up to 5,000 square feet of a building for personal storage. But what we don't want to do is have these warehouses turned into one of these big personal storage facilities. So that was the intent of making a conditional use permit there. So we'd be open to a change there, back to permitted, with that change to the definition of warehousing.
And why, why was it changed to a conditional use permit rather than just a minor use permit?
Well, that's a good, that's a good question. I mean, perhaps that was, you know, maybe we should have done an M instead of a C. So, I mean, if you're more inclined to go to an M than a C, to have some discretion over that, we'd be amenable to that as well.
Okay. Jill. Jill.
Yeah, can we get a definition of that process, actually?
Sure. Lisa, did you want to walk them through the processes?
For the use permits?
Sure, the minor versus conditional.
Sure. With respect to the minor use permit, essentially what that would require a potential tenant to do is to submit an application and a fee and provide us with the typical required information that goes along with the use permit. We would work closely with the tenant. We would look at the proposed conditions that are part of use permits, that are the two new findings that are required for use permits, and schedule a hearing, a public hearing with the zoning administrator to address the use permit. And I'd like to reiterate what Community Development Director Al Savae said, which was just because something is listed as conditionally permitted or as a minor use permit, it doesn't necessarily mean that staff would deny the use. It just provides the city with that discretion that we're looking for. So that's, that's how it works with minor use permits. It's subject to review and approval by the zoning administrator. And we can schedule those hearings pretty much anytime that works for the tenant and with the zoning administrator and staff. And the, again, it's just a hearing in our, in our small conference room. With a conditional use permit, the process is essentially the same, but it is subject to review and approval by the planning commission. So the level of discretion is at a higher level. And that's pretty much the difference.
And I think there, you know, there was some comment about what an applicant has to do to get through the process. And yes, an applicant has to, you know, submit plans. So they may have to hire a designer or an architect or somebody to draw up a set of plans to show the building and the footprint and the floor area. So there may be some costs, there usually is cost associated with that as well. And preparing the application, and there's time to go to the meeting. So there is time and effort that goes into these from an applicant standpoint.
Start to finish timeframe from the application process?
On average.
On average.
Really depends. Lisa?
Yeah, I was just going to say, it depends each, you know, we can come up with an average, but it depends upon the project and it depends on whether we have been able to collaborate with the prospective tenant and gather all the necessary information that we need in order to make a recommendation. Once we have a completed application, complete means when we have everything that we need as part of the submittal requirements, we can pretty much schedule the meeting from that point forward. We do have some time limitations with respect to noticing, the 10-day notice requirement. But I would say, on average, from the time a project comes through to the time it goes to hearing, could be anywhere, you know, probably the soonest, you know, four weeks to maybe six, six to eight weeks. It depends on the project.
Anything further? Okay.
I'm sorry, just.
I'm gonna, I got a few comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just wanted to follow up on something.
Okay, go ahead.
For the warehousing and storage issue, as I'm understanding it, you're saying that the reason that you changed from conditional use, from permitted to conditional use under GCI and the landmark was out of concern about personal storage?
Yes.
But are we, are we talking about the definitions and use classifications in chapter 18.4? I mean, I don't, I don't see how indoor warehousing and storage with the, even with the change could possibly include personal storage when there's a separate, there's a separate definition for personal storage, which isn't used in the industrial uses section of the zoning. But, I mean, it's clearly excluded by indoor warehousing. So, I mean, if that's the concern, it sounds like there's no problem leaving it as a permitted use, right?
You know, again, the concern is that if it's permitted, you know, even if there's a prohibition elsewhere in the definitions or in other parts of the zoning, that someone might do it anyway. That's, that if you permit something to occur, it should just be clear that under the warehousing definition, that that doesn't mean what the other definition says about personal storage, okay? That's, we want to be clear that the indoor warehousing does not include that. And again, if the city doesn't have any use permit discretion, minor use permit, whatever, then someone could theoretically say, oh, indoor warehousing, I'm going to turn it all into small units and rent them out. That's, that's the concern. So just to be clear in the, you know, you say there's another definition of personal storage? I believe there is, right?
Yeah, it's in 18.40.050. It's not used within the industrial uses section of the zoning ordinance. I mean, it doesn't appear anywhere, but it's specifically separate from indoor warehousing and storage. And the new language to indoor warehousing and storage specifically seems to contemplate very, very minor personal storage. I mean, that's the new red language, as far as I can see. So I don't know how you could possibly interpret that to include any additional personal storage.
Okay.
I mean, but, I mean, if Mr. Rubens disagrees with me, I mean, I just don't see the need to have, to make this, since this was the concern raised by the person who wasn't in the landmark area, it seems like you can address that concern simply by leaving this as permitted. If that's the concern for, that was the rationale for changing it to a conditional use permit, is it?
That's, that was the rationale.
All right.
Sorry. That's okay. I'm going to turn this all around. I'm going to suggest the idea that what we're doing here is we're punishing the landowners, okay? And. And we're putting the burden on the landowners. Instead of turning it around and saying, instead of saying, what we really should be doing is we should really be expecting city staff to come forward with a plan for a hotel. In the meantime, as far as I'm concerned, there's absolutely no reason to change this from GCI to LC, okay? You can still accomplish the, the intent of the general plan, the intent, if you put up the passages of the general plan, you can actually still accomplish that while not burdening the landowners. So if we leave it as GCI, okay, the landowners have all the uses that are permitted. And now the responsibility isn't forced upon the landowners to come up with some sort of reasons why a, a hotel doesn't work. We actually put that responsibility back on city staff for city staff to come up with a reason or a plan for a hotel. What's happened here is, from, from the way I look at it, is that we have taken the responsibility for this hotel and we've sort of forced it on the landowners, okay? And, and I have a real problem with that, okay? For me, I would like to see the landowners actually given the widest possible use of their land, okay? And then have staff come back with a proposal for a hotel rather than forcing the landowners to essentially not have any, or have very few options for the use of their land, okay? I, I just think that I have a real problem with doing this, okay? We're, we're essentially taking the ability for them to use their properties the way they, they want to. There's no reason why we can't accomplish the same thing with the landmark by giving them the ability to use their property in whatever way they want. And if the market bears a hotel, then I think a hotel would be great. But from what I hear from all of these landowners, there's very few of them who are willing to sell their property for a hotel. So at this point, in the foreseeable future, we have no opportunity for a hotel. All I see is negatives for the property owners, negatives for the city because the properties are not being utilized to the best of their ability outside of a hotel. So I look at it and go, from my perspective, there's no reason to change this from GCI. Comments?
Obviously, I disagree with you. I mean, I first, I really hate the word punitive because it means to punish and it means that the intent is to hurt the, the property owners. And that's clearly not staff's, it, I'm not suggesting that it's not going to affect the economics of the property. It certainly is, but that's not the purpose of it. The purpose of it is to benefit the city. It's not, it's not, it's not, it's not designed to punish. That, that's the first thing. I just, I mean, that's just a semantics issue. The other thing is, you know, the, your premise is that we can still have a hotel here or retail if we just leave it the way it is. And that's just not the reality. The reality is there's a proposal for a fitness center and that's what's going to go there. And, I mean, I would like to have the city review that. And so that's why I, I mean, I just think your basic premise is flawed.
Then the reality is, is you're looking at a hotel or retail, none of the property owners really want that. So what we're essentially doing is, doing is forcing them down a path for which they do not want to go.
That's right. That's, I mean, that's a policy decision. It's a policy decision we're being asked to make.
Right. And from my perspective, that is not something willing, that I am willing to do.
I mean, we do it all the time, though. I mean, we, we do it all the time. We're constantly limiting people what they can build. I mean, just the other month, we were limiting when people could drive their trucks up and down the road. You know, we limit what people, you know, when people can drive. We're limiting how, we may limit how tall particular properties that may be developed in the future are going to be. You know, that's what we do. Now, you, you can, you can, as a policy matter, say you don't think this is good policy because the, because the hotel is never going to be built. And frankly, that is a very reasonable conclusion. That is, that is an absolutely reasonable conclusion. You know, I'm going to rely on, on that guy over there. He tells him, he tell, he's telling me it's going to be built. You know, that's what he does for a living. I'm, I'm going to rely on him. I hope he's right.
But you're, 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 you're doing that, wait a minute, wait a minute. You're, you're, you're doing that at the expense of all the landowners, okay?
I understand that. I understand that. I am.
And that's where I run into the, into the problem here, okay? Is, is if the hotel were truly going to, is truly a viable project, okay? You're going to need all of these landowners that are sitting out here.
Well, I think, I think your point is right, is that basically by limiting what they can do, we are forcing them to cooperate. I mean, that, that is, that's accurate.
But they still don't need to cooperate.
There's nothing to cooperate.
There's, there's nothing to cooperate on. They don't want to sell their properties for a hotel. And, and, you know, we can force them down this road and it might take another 25 years. And in the meantime, we've lost any potential revenue from these properties for the next 25 years. And is, is that the direction we really want to go in this city? Do we really want to force them down? Do we really want to force property owners, business owners, to, to go down a path where we tell them what they can do on their property and, and so narrowly defined that it's a hotel, regional retail?
Or office.
Office space.
Yeah.
And, and I just have a problem with defining it.
And then that's, that's a reasonable policy decision for you to take. I, I don't disagree with that.
That, that much.
Mr. Savae, you wanted to say something, I think?
No, I think I'll withhold comment at this point. Thank you.
Well, I, I don't know how this is going to go, but I'm going to make the motion and see what happens. I move that the, oh, shoot. I, well, no, I have the motion. I don't need to be put up. The, the problem is, is that I do want to modify so that if my motion is, is passed, that the, that the change that was recommended to the GCI on page thirty-one from conditional use to permitted use, excuse me, from permitted use to conditional use not be made, I'm going to, I'm going to try and incorporate that into the motion. I don't know how to do it. So I'm assuming Mr. Rubens is going to correct me if I screw it up, I hope.
Commissioner Silverman, I just, I was talking with Mr. Savae when you, when you made the comment, so just repeat it when you're, when you're making your effort to include it in the motion.
Sure.
I'll monitor it more closely.
I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending the city council adopt an ordinance to amend the San Carlos zoning map and San Carlos zoning ordinance, Title eighteen of the San Carlos Municipal Code, to establish a new zoning district, landmark, commercial, and to amend use regulations pertaining to the general, commercial, industrial, CGI zoning district pursuant to the attachments, with the exception of, I would propose that on page thirty-one of the City of San Carlos, Title eighteen, zoning, Article two, basin overlay districts, that the change of warehousing and storage, indoor warehousing and storage and outdoor storage not be changed from a permitted use to a conditional use and remain a, a permitted use.
That's clear.
Thanks.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. I would like to make a motion that we recommend to the city council that we leave the existing zoning at, as GCI.
I second that.
Although some.
Through, through the chair, just before you, just procedurally, what you have before you is a resolution recommending approval. I think that the, the resolution or the motion would be to enact a resolution recommending against the proposal and then that could be then considered.
Okay.
I think that's what you're intending to do there.
That is what I'm intending to do here. What Mr. Rubens said.
Just the resolution, instead of the resolution before you, what you're, you don't have a, you don't have a negative resolution.
Okay.
Before you. What I normally do is if, if that's the pleasure of the commission, you make the reso, you, you'd, you'd move a resolution to not accept the recommendation for the zoning ordinance amendment that's been proposed. And then we can either bring back a formal resolution or you can let that stand because you don't necessarily have to make as many findings when you're just simply not approving it. But I'd like you to make findings in the record of why you're not recommending approval.
Okay. So I would like actually to spend a little bit more time with this entire resolution and suggest that we actually continue it to a future meeting and, and have some discussion about, are there changes in the GCI that need to be made if we leave it the way it is, okay? To address any concerns that, that staff may have as far as concerns about consistency with the general plan. Would staff?
Yeah, I mean, some of the direction, when we first brought the urgency ordinance to the city council, one of the directions that we had was to take a thorough look at the zoning ordinance. And while we weren't able to look at the entire zoning ordinance, I think the direction was clear that we should look at, you know, if there's problems that we see in the current zoning for this category, that we should make recommend, you know, make recommendations on changes. And so you have the GCI recommendations before you. So those are the ones that we would suggest and we can, if you want, we can, we have reasons for each of them. If you want to go down, we talked about changing one tonight. So those are, that is still what's recommended by staff to make changes to the GCI.
Then let's go down through those.
Okay.
So the, on page twenty-nine.
You want to go through each one?
I would like to go through each one.
Government offices, a conditional use permit, and three says, the footnote three says that except not allowed between industrial road and Highway 101 and Skyway and 101. And you can see on that map there, the reason for that is, is because government offices generate no property taxes for the city. It's a non, they're considered to be nonprofits. So we were thinking from an economic, long-term economic development perspective that you wouldn't want to have this use at all in that corridor because that's your primary economic development corridor. So they would be permitted across the way on industrial with a conditional use permit, but not along the Highway 101 corridor. So that's the thinking there.
That one's, that's not a change, anyway. It's, it's actually not a change.
Well, it's a change to three.
Change.
No, all, all that's changed is the, oh, the footnote is added.
Footnote's added.
It already existed.
Yeah.
If you would, yeah, so that's the thinking behind the threes. So the footnotes, that's the thinking. Automobile vehicle washing, if you look at the definition of that, again, it's another use that has little economic value to the city. So that's the reason for that. And if you would, if you want, you can look at the definition. We went through each definition and discussed each of them. Trying to find that one, if you like, but that's the same thinking that, that went into that one. That's like a car wash.
Yep.
Large-scale GCI, from a P to a C, same thing, large scale. We, we're, we're in a situation where.
That would mean?
Large scale is defined to include large outdoor facilities such as amusement or theme parks, stadiums, arena, racetracks, golf courses. These kinds of facilities have lots of ancillary issues for, for cities. And the city should have discretion over what happens with regard to these large-scale fitness uses and other outdoor facilities. And so that's the idea. You can see some of the uses there and perhaps why the city would want to have discretion if it was going to go in that area of the city. The next one would be reverse vending machine and recycling collection facility. Again, recycling collection facility is pretty much what it says, generates very little, if any, revenues to the city and has significant impacts to the city's infrastructure because of all the truck traffic. Reverse vending machine, going to have to look up the definition for that one.
I can read that. It's on page eleven of the attachment. It's an automated mechanical device that accepts and sorts and processes recyclable materials and issues a cash refund or redeemable credit slip.
Okay.
Indoor warehousing and storage and outdoor storage, we changed back to P with clarification. Freight truck terminals warehouses, light fleet-based services and, and those two, again, we're seeing they're permitted, but just not along the Highway 101 corridor, again, because you're trying to attract businesses that, you know, generate some property taxes, revenues to the city. These are, you know, heavy-duty industrial uses that have a lot of freight and truck traffic and generate little, if any, economic development potential for the city or, so in utilities, same thing. We already have a, a major utility along our corridor on eighteen acres of prime real estate there that generates nothing for the city. Again, these could be characterized as nonprofit organizations or quasi-governmental facilities that don't add to the economic prosperity of the city and tie up large chunks of land. So we would like to have some discretion.
Okay. So can we go back up to warehousing and storage?
Uh huh.
Indoor warehousing and storage is permitted and outdoor storage is permitted?
Yeah, that's.
Discussion.
Yes.
That both of them would be permitted.
Yeah.
Okay.
For the commissioners, just a quick clarification, a lot of the attention, I know I'm speaking on board, has been to the landmark sites. You have letters in your packets from Hankwich, you have this third, well, he doesn't speak, she's in GCI. We have one property in the landmark.
Can you, can you please come up to the microphone and speak?
Mr. Chair.
Close the public hearing.
We've, we've closed the public hearing. We, we do allow questions from the commission to members of the public after you've closed the public hearing, but it's not an opportunity to present new evidence or information.
Okay.
So we're not, we're not.
About a clarification, then, of the people that aren't being addressed. The landmark is one zone, but the GCI, they have letters.
We understand, I think that's the, that's the, what we're discussing.
Okay, I don't think it's getting across to Mr. Silverman.
Just hang on. Hang on.
Let me just kind of bring us back where we are procedurally. I think there was a motion in a second that we discussed and then we diverged into this discussion of possible amendments to the CGI. So I want to make sure the record's pretty clear on where we are.
Okay.
Is the intent of that motion to be withdrawn and then, because there was a suggestion to continue the item, to bring back. to bring back changes, setting aside the landmark commercial and then bringing it back for just CGI changes.
I'm going to poll the commission here.
Poll?
You mean, vote?
No, just ask you whether, do you want to try and change all of this tonight? Do you want staff to come back with a revised version?
I think that they've already done the revised version. That's what they're referring to.
Okay.
This is the revision.
I mean, obviously, I don't have a problem with the revised version, but I could see why your philosophy would apply equally to these as well. Because all of these limit the property owners as well.
I, I mean, but we're limiting the entire, all the properties the same rather than picking out one particular small group and putting much greater restrictions on those individuals than anywhere else on, in that area.
That's definitely true.
And that's the problem I'm having here. I don't, I...
Scott, I would go through with what your motion was and see where it goes. I mean, that's your train of thoughts of...
The other piece of this that I have an issue with is the fact that the number four talks about permitted by right in existing buildings only, okay? And so from my perspective, that only takes place in...
Was that only a landmark?
Only a landmark.
Okay, so that becomes irrelevant.
Yep.
And five, I don't have a problem with the storage. Storage in small individual spaces.
That's what we were talking about before. But I think it actually, if you change, if you change the storage back to permitted, it's irrelevant, so you can just strike five.
You can strike five as part of the GCI outdoor warehousing and storage. Okay, so we can get rid of four and five as changes.
Well, I mean, you can also, if you wanted to, if Mr. Seve is right and I'm wrong and the, originally, and the prior language was ambiguous, I mean, you can leave five there. It doesn't hurt anything.
Personal storage?
Yeah, it doesn't hurt anything.
Okay, so the motion is to leave the existing properties, the landmark properties as GCI. And there is a second and the...
Except you're going to have to...
I'd like a friendly amendment?
Yeah, I mean, I think you, I think the motion would have to be, and I could make it, assuming you can do this, is, shoot, man, this is tough. Because you're recommending that the city does adopt an ordinance to change the zoning ordinance, but not, I think I can do it.
Oh, so now you're...
Yeah, I think it would be, I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending the city council adopt an ordinance to amend the San Carlos zoning map and San Carlos zoning ordinance, Title 18 of the San Carlos municipal code, to amend use regulations pertaining to the general, commercial, industrial zoning district, but not establishing a new zoning district landmark commercial pursuant to the attachments.
And changing the indoor warehousing and storage and outdoor storage to permitted use.
Back to permitted use is correct. That would be my motion.
Okay, first we have to...
You should do a count, you should do a roll call.
First, we have to vote on the first resolution, which we will have to, we will have to...
There's two ways you can handle this. You could have the first motion withdrawn or you could consider the second motion, an amended motion, which then could be seconded and then voted on in precedence over the first motion.
I think my motion covers what you want.
So let's withdraw the first motion.
And I just, I know this is a lot of detail, but the resolution before you has a lot of information that's related to the landmark commercial. So I'd like the motion to include that those references be stricken from the basis for the resolution so we can bring back a resolution that is consistent with your motion tonight.
Okay, I will incorporate that and to try and make it clear, I'll restate my motion. I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending the city council adopt an ordinance to amend the San Carlos zoning map and San Carlos zoning ordinance, Title 18 of the San Carlos municipal code, to amend use regulations pertaining to the general, commercial, industrial zoning district, not establish a new zoning district landmark commercial. Remove all references to the landmark commercial in the existing resolution and modify the zoning ordinance specifically page 31 to have indoor warehousing and storage and outdoor storage remain permitted uses in, permitted industrial uses in the overlay districts.
One more clarification, because this is a very complicated action you're taking. There are attachments to the resolution that still refer to the landmark commercial, so you want to have that, those stricken to the changes to the zoning ordinance. We have a definition of landmark commercial. You won't want that if you're not going to have that kind of a district. And you would want to strike the finding, I'm looking at, it's 18.30 use permits. 18.30.060G refers to landmark commercial.
Okay, I think I can do this.
And then there's two findings.
I think I can, if I, if I move to strike all references to landmark, landmark commercial in the materials to be sent to the city council, will that solve the issue?
Yes.
Okay, I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending the city council adopt an ordinance to amend the San Carlos zoning map and San Carlos zoning ordinance, Title 18 of the San Carlos municipal code, to amend the use regulations pertaining to the general, commercial, industrial zoning district, not establish a new zoning district landmark commercial. Strike all references to a landmark commercial zone appearing in any document being forwarded to the city council and changing page 31 of the, of Article II base and overlay districts, industrial uses, indoor warehousing and storage and outdoor storage, keeping those uses as permitted uses and not changing them to conditional use permit uses.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Interesting that you made the motion, though.
Efficiency.
Just let the record reflect what the vote was for the resolution.
Record is three to one.
We had three to one and we had Mr. Silverman vote against.
Yes, okay. Moving on, reports, correspondence and general information.
I'd just like to report that at the last city council hearing, I believe it was, the council adopted an update, reviewed a fee study and adopted updates to the fee schedule. Those will go into effect on August 1st. And that's all I have unless you have anything else on city council.
Planning commission comments or reports?
Thank you, Scott, for your services, Chair. And thank you for those of you, I guess all of you who voted for me to be the next victim coming down the pipe. Thank you very much.
Will there be a coronation ceremony?
I hope not.
No, I don't think so. I think we'd just pass the gavel.
Well, I would like to just report that I'm running for city council.
You are running for city council.
If I turn in my 501, it's best.
Excellent.
Hopefully, the city council will allow me to stay on the planning commission because my purpose...
Depends on who you're running against, I assume.
Okay.
So what happens?
Correspondence?
Well, congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
Good luck.
Thank you.
I don't have any correspondence to share with the planning commission.
Planning staff comments, reports and updates of current projects.
Last Monday on May 13th, the San Carlos, the developer for the San Carlos Transit Village submitted revised set of plans. Staff is currently working on, as the commission may know, because our administrative staff has been working with you to schedule a site visit prior to scheduling a meeting with the planning commission to review the plans. And this will happen, our goal is to make this happen in June. We're looking at June 17th hearing.
The hearing is June 17th or the site visit?
The visit.
I believe the site visit would come before. It would come, I think we're looking at the 12th and the 17th, I believe. But if you haven't heard from staff, you will soon.
I thought it was the 12th, then.
Well, I mean, the date was proposed and I guess I was wondering whether the date has been confirmed.
They didn't. They haven't confirmed it. They just asked for availability.
I think that's correct. Yeah, I think there was a request for availability, but I don't think there's been a confirmation yet.
Yeah.
On the commissioner's availability for the date that we identified.
I've...
You've met?
Yes.
I've said yes, I think.
Oh, that's right. It's Wednesday.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, great.
At least three of us have said yes.
Okay.
Four of us have said yes.
Okay, great.
I would expect it may be June 12th.
Staff continues, in the planning division, we continue to maintain a very high caseload. We have about, on average, 50 to 55 current development projects. Most of those are design review, a lot of them in administrative design review where lots of folks are doing additions to their house or tear downs and rebuild. Some of those require to be presented before the residential design review commission. And we have received some applications for, an application for a new mixed-use project on the 900 block of Laurel and also recently received a pre-application for a mixed-use project along El Camino Real. So we continue to be very active in the development proposals before the city. And that's about it.
And I'm going to tack on to that just one thing, and that is that the, I got a, I figured I'd wait until you talked about the Transit Village. The Greater East San Carlos group is meeting on...
Wednesday, right?
Wednesday, May 22nd. And I wanted to make sure that all the other planning commissioners were aware of it if they wanted to attend from 7:00 to 9:30 at the L'Oréal building where the Legacy will present the Transit.
Yeah.
Yes.
Wouldn't that be a Brown Act problem? If we all showed up there at the same time?
No, I won't show up, so.
It'd be under the exception for community meetings, but you could not sit with each other or speak during this meeting and you could, you could listen to the presentation.
It's an observation.
It's an exercise.
What's the dating?
This Wednesday.
Wednesday, May 22nd. Seeing nothing further, meeting adjourned.